Got it.
Do you want to move it now?
The state does such valuable work, such incredible work.
First five was established because of the science and the research saying that we can actually prevent long-term negative outcomes if we focus on the first five years.
It is an effort that has been prioritized by myself and by many of my colleagues.
We all ready? Good afternoon, everyone. It is my pleasure to reconvene the Monterey County Board of Supervisors meeting for March 22nd, 2022. If I can gather the attention of my colleagues, I will have the clerk call roll.
Good afternoon. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisors Adams, Lopez, and Phillips appearing in person and supervisors Alejo and Askew appearing via video conference.
Thank you very much. And if we could please have Mr. Diego Celis make the Spanish interpretation announcement.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Diego Celis. He's our interpreter in Spanish for the reunion today. If you're planning to make a comment and you need an interpreter, please speak slowly and enough strongly so that I can listen. Make a pause at the end of your prayers to assure yourself that I have the opportunity to interpret. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will get into our first scheduled matter, which is item number 12, which is to receive an update on issues related to homelessness in Monterey County. And I know we're going to have a very interesting presentation, so I will immediately turn it over to Mr. Nick Chulos.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. Good afternoon. Yes, we have several items to go over with you this afternoon to give you an update on homelessness in Monterey County from a couple of different perspectives. We have two presenters that are going to be with us today. The first is Mr. Cody Ziger, who is with the California Interagency Council on Homelessness. He's the Director of Statewide Policy, and we're very, very fortunate to have him join us. We had a last-minute change in plan. Ms. Julie Lowe unfortunately had a death in her family. She's the Executive Director of the Council, and she was unable to attend. And we're so glad that Mr. Ziger is able to join us this afternoon to talk about funding opportunities for local jurisdictions in dealing with homelessness. We've heard a lot about that in terms of the governor's budget, and we're going to hear more detail today from Mr. Ziger. We also have Roxanne Wilson with us today, who, as you know, is the Executive Officer of the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers. Roxanne's going to give us an update on the implementation of the five-year plan to reduce homelessness in Monterey and San Bernito Counties, which was previously adopted by your board several months ago. And then we're going to talk to you briefly about planning activities for the multi-agency summit on homeless issues that we're planning for the middle of July of this coming year. And just as an aside, we notified via the city managers all of the cities about today's meeting so that they could tune in if they chose. Because the funding opportunities are, of course, important to the county, but they're also important to the cities. We want to make sure that they're able to listen in. And just last, as kind of an aside, we closed the recruitment on the Director of Homeless Services position that you approved recently. And we're in the process of having those applications screened by an outside panel of screeners. I understand we had a good response to the recruitment, and we're looking forward to interviewing and hopefully selecting that individual soon. So with that introduction, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Cody Ziger from the Council on, the Interagency Council on Homelessness, to talk to us about funding opportunities available on addressing the homeless issue. So if I could ask the clerk to make sure he's admitted. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome, Mr. Ziger. Thank you for giving some time to us. We appreciate very much your helpful information.
Yeah, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
And we are not hearing you.
How about now?
A little better, but not much.
Let me try one more thing.
Madam Chair, if I might, Valerie, for some reason, I'm hearing him over here on this computer. I'm not sure if that's...
How about now? Is that any better?
No, still not hearing you. We can see your lips moving and hear you, but it's as if you're on like virtual zero. Sounds like that's gonna be better.
Adams, we are hearing him on Zoom loud and clear, so I'm not sure if it's an audio issue inside chambers.
Do you, does anybody, am I the only one who's not hearing this man?
No, we're not hearing him on the speakers in the chambers. No.
Okay.
Madam Chair, maybe because there's a video forthcoming on his PowerPoint presentation that may be, switch the audio from the computer.
Now, is that on Cody's side, or is that something we need to do?
If you disable the PowerPoint with the YouTube video that may assist with his audio.
Eric.
I believe he has a, he's gonna, Cody, you're showing a presentation, right?
I am not. I was gonna say...
Perfectly.
Oh, great. Perfect.
Hello. Welcome. Let's start all over again. Nice to see you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I'm glad we can all hear. Thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. So let me just pull up my iNotes backup here. So yeah, hello, members of the board. Thank you all for having me today. So as was mentioned, I'm Cody Ziger. I'm the Director of Statewide Policy here at the California Interagency Council on Homelessness. And as mentioned, I'm standing in for Julie, who definitely regrets not being able to be here today, but I'm really glad that I was able to put some time into this conversation. And by way of background on myself, I have worked in the past in both Alameda and San Francisco counties on homelessness projects there as well. And today, I just really wanted to give some introduction to CalICH, an overview of the grants that we administer, and then really just show you our strategic spending guide that we've put together, which is where you can find a lot of detailed information on the state funding, state and federal funding available for homelessness services. So just by, for a quick introduction of the California Interagency Council on Homelessness. We were created in 2017 as the, formerly known as the Homeless Coordinating and Financing Council. So if you, if you see that name, it's one in the same. We just had a name change in January. And so we were created to oversee the implementation of Housing First policies, guidelines, and regulations to reduce homelessness in California. In 2021, Governor Newsom signed a law which renamed and restructured our council to continue our momentum towards the state's broader vision for greater statewide leadership and coordination around our response to the homelessness crisis. So our mission is really to develop policies and identify, you know, resources, benefits, and services to prevent and work towards ending homelessness in California. And we do this through a few, a few means. The first is grant making, which we'll dive into in a bit. But we also do a lot of state-level coordination of homelessness policy. We do this through our action plan for preventing homelessness, as well as five interagency working groups that we're putting together. And we collect and analyze statewide data through the homeless data integration system and produce research on homelessness in the state. And we work to identify and lift up best practices from local communities across the state. So this is, you know, a high level about what CalICH does, among other work. So just for some background information. And I will go ahead and share my screen, because now I'd like to go through some of the funding opportunities that we have available at CalICH around homelessness services. Let me try to do that. Can you see this? Should say, Homelessness Housing Assistance and Prevention Program.
Yes, we can see it. Thank you.
Great. Wonderful. So I'm going to go through the grants that CalICH administers. As we'll talk about, this is, they're, you know, just a couple in the landscape of funding available at the state level. But I will, I'll give some information about how we can, how you can find out more information about other grants that are available. But I, that's not necessarily my area of expertise, so I just wanted to focus on what we have available here today. So we'll start with the HAP program, which you may have heard about, Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. This is, you know, $1 billion annually over the next two fiscal years allocated to continuance of care, counties, large cities, and tribal organizations. And the funding is intended to be flexible with a broad range of potential uses, as you can see on the screen here, with a, really with a focus on permanent housing. And the funding, so we're in, we're in round three of the HAP program. And the funding for this round is tied to meeting seven performance goals that are established by each jurisdiction based on HUD system performance measures. And the notice of funding opportunity for this program was released in December, and applications are due on June 30th of this year. So that's our biggest grant program that we have. I'm happy to dive a little bit more into it later if there are questions, but that's sort of the biggest pool of flexible funding that we administer at CalICH. Another funding program, I'll just scroll down here, and I'm showing you the guide that we will go through later. So another pool of funding that we have is the Encampment Resolution Funding Program. And so this was $50 million to provide housing and services solutions for people currently staying in encampments specifically. This also includes a focus on access to permanent housing. And the goal here is to identify scalable and replicable best practices for non-punitive, person-centered activities to address the housing and services needs of people experiencing homelessness and living in encampments. And really, really focusing on utilizing Housing First approaches to address the needs of people living in encampments here. And so this, this grant program, the application's closed in December, and the notices of intent to award were out late February. But there, there could be potentially more to come with this program in the future. And the last program that I'll just really quickly go through is the Family Homelessness Challenges Challenge Grants and Technical Assistance Program. So this program is open now. Actually, it's $40 million to provide competitive grants to technical assistance, sorry, competitive grants and technical assistance to local jurisdictions to promote rapid innovation, accelerate nascent programs, and expand upon promising practices to create scalable solutions that can be shared across the state to address and end family homelessness. And so really geared towards families with minor dependence across the state. And the goal here is to really accelerate local jurisdictions' rehousing efforts that can demonstrate sort of this cross-system collaboration and multifunder initiatives and efforts that coordinate across funding streams and systems. And so the request for applications for this was released on March 1st, so really recently, and applications are due April 30th. So sort of the common thread you can see across the CalICH programs is coordination and collaboration across different parts of the homelessness services response system. And so those are our three, this is really briefly about our three funding programs that we have going right now. And I'll walk you through just quickly also our strategic spending guide, which is what I have up here. And so if we just take a look, this is on our website. I'm happy to share a link to this as well. But we, we put this together because we know there is a lot of funding from a lot of different sources, both state and federal, relating to homelessness services. So we put together what we call the Putting the Funding Pieces Together Guide, or for short, the Strategic Spending Guide. And really what this, the goal of this document is to provide information on all of the homeless services funding opportunities that we know of or knew of in, you know, November 2021. And our goal is to keep this updated and re-release this every six months to a year. So that's, that's our hope, is to keep this updated to help with the coordination. And one thing that this document does well is that it, you know, there's a lot of information here. So I covered, right, like three programs that CalICH administers. And you can see them here at HAP, the Encampment Resolution Funding Program, and the Family Homelessness Challenge Grants. But there are so many more funding programs related to homelessness services. So what this document attempts to do is give sort of a high-level overview in this first part of what are the different funding programs and what are the prioritized uses of those programs? So non-congregate shelter interim housing, rental assistance, permanent supportive and service-enriched housing, and diversion and homelessness prevention. So which of these programs, right, can you, which, which funding can you use for which uses? So that's sort of the first part, and it goes through both state and federal programs here. The second part of the document is what we saw, really diving into each of these funding programs with a lot of detail, probably more than is necessary to go through at this moment, but it's good for the, for the policy folks on your team. And then the last part of this document is local investment plans. So we encourage people to use this really actively, this document. And so it's, we have a sample here of like how you could create a local investment plan based on, you know, the different funding opportunities that are in here. So this is just an example that we put together, you know, which funding streams can be used for which, which uses from the local level. So I will send out the link to this document as well, because I think it's, it has a lot more information than I can provide in 10 minutes. But I'll wrap up here. Happy to open it up to any questions you might have for me or go to the next speaker as well.
Thank you very much for presenting that. I'm glad you can provide a link, because for someone who has aging eyes, it was a little tiny and hard to read. But I think that the information you provided was very important, so I look forward to it. But I think that the information you provided was very important. So I look forward to having all of us receive that link. And I know you can provide it to Mr. Chouz and we will be able to have it. Let me just see at this point if any of my colleagues have any questions, if we'd like to move forward to the rest of our presentation. And seeing yes, Supervisor Reed, ask you, your hand is up.
Mr. Ziegler, thank you so much for joining us today. We really appreciate the work that the state is doing to put the money that's needed to address these issues into the hands of local government so that we can be responsive to what is really a crisis that's being experienced across our state. I have a couple of questions. We collectively, I think, spend a lot of money moving people along without actually getting them into the permanent shelter that they need. And so some of the ways in which we find that people are unwilling to trust this, you know, this is the first time that we've had these kind of resources available. And so this need to build trust with people that we're actually going to follow through on what we say when we say we're going to, you know, get you into shelter. And we're not just going to leave you then two weeks later without any of the things that you've been able to collect along the way. Can you speak at all to the state's resources? You talked about the Encampment Resolution Grant, but funds for things like safe parking programs or the state's perspective on encampment solutions as an interim step towards getting people into the system where we can actually provide meaningful services and housing?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you. So our Encampment Resolution Program is really aimed at lifting up sort of innovative strategies and solutions proposed by local jurisdictions that help address the services needs of people living in encampments with a, with a goal, right, and a focus on finding permanent housing solutions. And so we didn't dictate in that notice of funding opportunity, you know, exactly what we wanted to see because we know that local jurisdictions know their people best. And so we wanted to provide the chance for them to sort of propose what they thought, what solutions they thought would work best for them with the people living, for the people living in encampments in their areas. And so those funds can be used flexibly in a lot of ways. We haven't, I haven't personally looked through all the applications that have come in, but I know there's a variety of proposals within those to address the needs of people living outside.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think, and I've seen some really innovative pieces come up there. And, you know, we oftentimes hear, oh, we can't use state money for safe parking or for, you know, these, these programs. But I think that what you're saying is that there really is more flexibility being made available. And it's worth pursuing potentially and trying to understand what might be available or how we could fit into what's happening or what's, what the resources. The other question that I have is, and you know, we're in Monterey County. We have 12 incorporated cities plus the county. And there's oftentimes this sort of assumption that, and it's changing, granted, but historically there's been the assumption that it's really the county's responsibility because we have social services, that the county should be the lead on all things related to homeless services and, and funding for shelter or related services. Can you just speak a little bit to that challenge of how do we align? How do we bring everyone along? I think the county is interested in taking on that leadership role, at least speaking for the board that, as I know, we've had discussions. But, you know, we can't do it without our city partners. And so just to that point of like, who is responsible and how do we navigate those? Really, on so many of these issues, nobody is, is ultimately, from a mandated perspective, responsible. So it comes down to sort of a moral and ethical and financial, who, who steps up?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I think so, from our perspective, I think this is reflected in our, our HAP program, our Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program. And we really, really do encourage, you know, local coordination between counties, cities, continuums of care. And, you know, we have been encouraging folks to apply jointly, you know, between cities and counties and like across jurisdictions for that funding. And so that's something that we, we really hope to see in this next round of funding, is that, is that, that local coordination. And in the planning for those grants and the applications, right, there's, there's, you know, local plans that are going to be created. And I think in that process as well, that, that's one way to facilitate getting on the same page, you know, locally. And so we hope that, that that process sort of facilitates that local coordination.
Great. Thank you. I'm sure there's many more things we could talk about, but I'll, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you again for joining us today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Reed. Ask you, are there any other questions from our comments, colleagues on the board? Anyone in the audience, any, any questions for Mr. Ziegler? Yes, okay, we do. Thank you.
Hi, Wes White, Salinas, Monterey County Homeless Union. Just actually curiously, like, you know, as we identify people in, in the HMS cars, the VI Spadats, and trying to put them into housing, how are we like creating that safety net form? Because the safe parking is nice, but it's only 12 hours a day. Somebody, they need to be somewhere 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you know, especially if they're infirmed, disabled. It makes it really difficult to keep on moving around. I'd like to see immunity from sweeps, like a guarantee that, that if we sign you up for services, we're not just going to try to steal everything you got and make you move along. Because people need to be somewhere. They need to get an address and we should also sign them up to register to vote. You know, so that way they can have an address and we have a way to find them and they do feel like they have a sense of relationship in this community. And I think the way that they're treated, they'll treat their environment much better. You know, it's just about redirecting some behavior. You know, if you don't want to see a blanket of trash or whatever. I don't think those are difficult problems to solve. I, I think that, that we set people up for failure. And I guess I was just wondering your take on that and how we could do that across the state? Because I've, I, we have 25 chapters throughout the state and they're all complaining this is about direct impact. And, you know, they're, they're hurting. So how do we alleviate that hurt?
Thank you, Wes. Would you like to respond, Mr. Ziegler?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think I have all the answers to that unfortunately, but I appreciate the, the comment and the question. And I think, you know, from our Encampment Resolution Funding Program, really the, I know I said this, but the, the focus is really on, on, you know, identifying solutions that really meet the needs of people living outside and living in encampments. And so one of the reasons we weren't prescriptive necessarily with exactly the solution that needed to happen was that we know you all have a more direct connection with the, with the folks living outside in encampments. So we wanted to provide an opportunity to really tailor the solutions to those communities with, again, obviously the focus on, on permanent housing, right? Because that's what we know and it's homelessness. But yeah, thank you for that comment.
Thank you for your comments as well. Okay, I'm sending it back to Mr. Chouz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if Mr. Ziegler can stay on for the rest of the meeting, that would be great, or as long as he can. Very helpful. Now we'd like to turn to Roxanne Wilson to have Roxanne, as the Executive Officer of the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers, give us an update on status of implementation of the five-year plan. And I believe she's on the line.
I am. Thank you so much, Nick. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm so glad to return. I do have some really great news about the work that's been happening since we've done the five-year, since you recently adopted the five-year plan. The community has been moving. We have been really getting to work and I, I just appreciate the County of Monterey's leadership in being the first to adopt the plan. I think that you started something and we, we definitely have other jurisdictions lining, lining up. And I, and I'm excited to get to that part of this presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and just jump right in. I assume we could all see the screen.
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. Uh-oh. Okay, so just a quick little reminder. Back in 2020, the Coalition worked with a lot of our partners, our local partners, specifically Department of Social Services. Thank you, everyone from that team. Monterey Health Department, San Benito County Health and Human Services and the City of Salinas. And we all agreed that we were going to rewrite the plan. Originally, there was a 10-year plan to own and homelessness. And we had realized that there, we needed a more actionable plan. Something that was focused on housing and we, and aligned with best practices. So we brought a whole team together and moved forward and we had released the plan in July 2021. As a quick reminder, there are three overarching strategies to reduce homelessness by 50% in five years. And those three overarching strategies was to increase the participation by local stakeholders, leaders, decision-makers across the region. We also wanted to improve system performance, right? So we looked, we did a lot of analysis on how our homeless response system was performing. And we had came up with objectives and thresholds on what we feel like is, would be considered a perform, you know, a performing system. And also we wanted to expand services to people who are living outside. So just to go through how we've been addressing strategy area number one. As I mentioned, the County of Monterey adopted the plan on November 16th, 2021. The County of San Benito and the City of Salinas and the City of King have also moved forward with adopting the plan. I am currently on the calendar for the City of Pacific Grove and the City of Seaside and I are in the process of working out a date as well. So as I mentioned, we're very excited. There's some, there's a lot of movement. And what I've learned is that people just didn't know exactly which way to turn, right? There is, we know that there's a homeless crisis. We know that there's a housing crisis. We had all these independent or siloed approaches. But what we love about the plan is it brought everybody together and it gave us one direction to focus on. And when we moved together, we're way more effective. We also started creating these intention, intentional collaboratives. So at the early, at the beginning of the plan, the Coalition had pulled together what's called the Funders Committee. So this is exactly what it sounds like. It's all of the funders of Monterey and San Benito Counties. And we get together to really strategize where our money is getting spent. Cody had mentioned the strategic, or the fund, I forgot what it's called, the Local Investment Plan, excuse me. That is a part of the HHAP Round Three Application. So these folks are, are definitely diving deep and really analyzing the amount of money that's coming into this community and making sure that it makes sense and it's in alignment with the five-year plan. We also relaunched the Housing Pipeline Committee. This committee is scary because it's a whole different language that I don't really speak. But it is of city managers, city planners, developers, the housing authority. So they're all getting together and having this discussion of what's in the pipeline, what are some of the new laws or ordinances that's coming down and how can we all work together to, to address some of these complications, right? We, the wonderful thing about the Housing Pipeline Committee is we have been able to move forward with what's called a fair market analysis. Supervisor Askew also had, had a lot of, of role in that. So thank you for that, Supervisor Askew. So the Coalition, not the Coalition, excuse me, the Housing Authority is going to be doing an analysis on our fair market rents. When we, and I assume we will, get this approved by HUD to increase our FMRs, that makes it more attractive for developers to develop housing in our community because the rent they'll get per unit will go up. This is for low-income housing and, and housing that is tied to vouchers mostly. So very excited about the work of the pipeline. And not too long ago, but it was before the five-year plan, certainly worth mentioning, we did establish a Youth for Action Board. It is really composed of transition age, transition age youth who have experienced homelessness. And they are an official committee of the Continuum of Care. They are also an advisory committee to the Coalition. So they are reviewing every single proposal that we get when it comes down to serving their population. We're very proud of them. They're certainly future leaders and I am excited for you guys to meet them in the future. We also learned that people just want to know the problem in its entirety, right? I think when we get piecemealed information over time and it's really hard to make those connections. So as mentioned, we'll be doing the Lead Me Home Summit on Homelessness at this very moment. It is scheduled for July 14th. I do ask that you guys, you know, put a hold in your calendars. I'm in the process of contracting with the Steinbeck Center. We currently have a hold on the date and we're just getting through it. So we're very excited. The Lead Me Home Summit on Homelessness is really targeted to jurisdictions. And so everybody can, again, get together, really understand what's going on so we could work in the same direction. We'll be talking about funding. We'll be talking about, the new point in time count would have been released by then. So we'll review like over time, how has our homeless crisis changed? The Coalition is in the process of doing a racial disparities analysis. And of course, our coordinated entry process is being evaluated. All of these things should wrap in the summer of this year. Under the strategy area number two of improving system performance. Really quickly, as a reminder, we were looking, we took a snapshot of what our system looks like. And this slide should look familiar if you had been into any of these meetings about the five-year plan. But what we have our baseline. And what we found out is that, you know, people were not exiting to permanent housing at the rates in which we felt like were appropriate, I suppose. We know what, we understand where, where the problems lie in that. We also would like to see the, the length of stay inside of emergency shelters, transitional housing and rapid rehousing significantly reduced. And we would like to see us serving people who are more literally homeless. There are many different categories of homelessness, but we really want to, the way you'll see impact is if we really hyper-focus on the people who are literally homeless, category one. And also during the five-year plan analysis, we took a snapshot of our housing market. And as you probably could have guessed, we have a major shortfall, shortfall of housing for the pot, for this particular population. So over time, we really needed to ramp up construction because we can't improve system performance if people have nowhere to go. Taking all of that information in, we have been focusing on building a system that just makes sense. So the City of Salinas hired an outreach coordinator and that outreach coordinator is in, is in strong partnership and collaboration with the Coalition. And they are just running, you know, coordinating the outreach between the several outreach teams that we have currently in our community. We've also systematically paired rapid rehousing funds with the emergency shelter funds. The Coalition is working with the city and the county to also do an emergency shelter guidelines. We're standardizing Housing First across the board. And also writing rapid rehousing policies, creating a landlord engagement strategic plan. And also the Coalition, I'm very happy to report, is hiring a manager of diversity, equity and inclusion. So we've been working very hard with the Housing Authority to increase the housing subsidy vouchers. As you guys are aware, there's 269 emergency housing vouchers that came into this community under the HUD's, you know, response during the pandemic. We've also been able to secure 65 foster youth for independence vouchers within the past six months and also 65 HUD-BASH vouchers. This is on top of, for HUD-BASH, that's on top of the 199 that already existed in our community. So the Housing Authority has also been rocking and rolling in trying to increase the amount of subsidies that we have in our community. But of course, that's challenging, right? Because we certainly don't have almost 400 available units in Monterey County to, to receive these vouchers. So we have been working with the City of Salinas, the city and the City of King to purchase units under Home Key. The City of Salinas has, the first round of Home Key was 101 PSH units at the Goodnight Inn. They just were awarded a total of, I think, $29 million to purchase the Sandboard Inn and I'm sorry, there's another one, but there, oh, the Salinas Inn on the PowerPoint. So, and then the City of King incredibly was able to secure a 46-unit permanent supportive housing project. And all of these projects will be accepting the vouchers that I mentioned in the previous screen. So again, it just goes back to making a system that makes sense and responds, identify, like, we, we're really being intentional at identifying gaps and filling those gaps. And then for the last strategy area, which is expanding the service-oriented responses to people who are experiencing homelessness. The City of Salinas has significantly increased outreach services. Now granted, a lot of that was under COVID, you know, the COVID waves of funding that came down. And, and we're working very hard to try to identify other way, resources to keep these outreach teams funded. The 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 truth of the matter is, is we can't do it without outreach. There, I was in the system when we only had, you know, a few outreach teams and it was, and it was very, very, very small teams and they just were really stretched. So having the CHA team who has been partnering with the county and the coalition, having Dorothy's place in their outreach team and also increasing um interim Inc. And the the city of Salinas now has their own outreach team and Community Human Services has a youth specific outreach team. I mean, really, they're the ones that helped us during the point in time count. They're the ones who's responding when a when a cleanup is scheduled. They're really important to this community and and it's and it's important to me to to try to keep them funded as long as we can. We've also just done things that are fairly basic, but we never thought to do it before, right? So we've updated and translated all of our outreach materials. Our outreach teams are actually doing emergency housing voucher referrals straight from encampments. So another thing that has historically happened was that people had to go to the agency to get those types of services. But now you could get your ID, you could get your social security card and your birth certificate for kids. You know, you could start those processes straight from an encampment. Meeting people real where they are has been very successful for us during the pandemic. And again, we just are working very hard to try to figure out how to keep this thing going. Also to mention, as you guys know, but this is really for the crowd, the county had just released an RFP for um for outreach. So thank you again for um you guys continuing to support the efforts of the Homeless Response Network. Um Cody brought up the encampment resolution fund. So here is a list. Of all of the communities who received money and the city of Salinas was one of those. So we are very grateful for the city for stepping forward and competing. There are some things that I really wanted to just bring up and lift up. So the original funding availability, I think Cody mentioned there was an increase, but it was forty seven million dollars. And of that forty seven million dollars, the city of Salinas was allocated four million or, you know, almost four point one. What we love about the city of Salinas's proposal is that it what, even though they took lead. The continuum and the county, because your water resource management team also joined. We were very strategic. We identified the the areas that we wanted to focus on. It is along creeks. Those creeks, to my understanding, feed into the Monterey Bay. So that was a very high priority for us. We also was able to identify that about half of those folks were undocumented. So we brought in Catholic charities. And then um we have been, the intention is to coordinate actual housing for every single one of those fifty ish people that were living inside of that encampment. And we wanted to make sure that that was the priority, right? That they landed in housing first. And after they got into housing, then we would work to um bring that that area of the creek where they were clean, where they were. Housed from um back to its original natural state. The the ERF, I I and I know I'm sitting on this on this on this slide for a minute, but I think it's important to note. That the reason why the city, in my humble opinion, was successful at receiving that is because they actually had a place for people to go, right? The state was looking for that that nexus. And what we were, and because the city just received the home keys, these this population will have, you know, dibs at those units. And they have also put inside of their application money for the folks who don't qualify for home keys, usually because of their citizenship status. A lot of the home keys, as I mentioned, require um vouchers and a lot of folks who are undocumented, especially if they're by themselves, they won't be able to get. To get one of those vouchers. So the city put housing subsidies for undocumented folks within their application. It was a seven million dollar project and they were able to find three million dollars worth of um local match and leverage. So I feel like the the component of immigration services. Also, the the people that they had at the table made that application really strong. So we're very happy for the city of Salinas. There are other services, right? Um as I mentioned, the Department of Social Services just released an RFP for a safe parking program. And also your nighttime outreach. Um the coalition continues to sponsor porta potties and sanitation stations throughout the county. We have raised a lot of money to keep those going. In the first two years, it's it costs us about a quarter million dollars to keep those out. We still have some money to keep it going, at least until the end of this year. So um that's really important. People need to be able to wash their hands and use the restroom. So we have responded accordingly. And that actually concludes my my presentation. Um thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Roxanne. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Are there questions of board members for Roxanne Wilson?
Supervisor Phillips.
Thank you for the presentation and uh and your organization, your people were key uh when we were trying to make some changes and had to. Do something down at the Pawarau River. Uh, so your services were invaluable. And, you know, and uh we we heard today about, you know, don't have the sweeps and and don't do that. And um I I just feel that there are some people who, because of maybe some mental health issues or other issues. Just aren't going to be willing to come in um to a homeless shelter. Or they may not be able to come in because they can't follow the rules. But has there been any focus on on outreach workers going out to the people in the field and. Providing the help and services so they can clean up their own area. The 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 reason we have to have these cleanups is uh they've made such a mess and uh people. Uh, our citizens just don't feel like they have to uh live with that. And the most of the objection you have from your people isn't the fact that someone's on the side of the highway with. With a tent and their dog and some other things there. It's all the other things that accumulate. When I went up, was working on a project that we had uh in Prunedale there and when we went up and. Uh, the the guy had thirty two shopping baskets uh that he brought from Safeway up there and never returned him or anything. So. My thing is, it that we talked about, I know the city of Salinas has done a little bit of that of helping with cleanup. But i- is that feasible or is that something to say, look, we we understand? We're not sanctioning you be here, but here's the resources. We'll help you clean it up and we'll have a, maybe we put a bathroom out there for you uh to to provide that service.
Thank you so much Supervisor Phillips. I always appreciate your district. Your staff are incredible and and we have actually done that in your district. I, there was once a constituent who had made a complaint about a person who was. Living on one of the roundabouts and the coalition worked with the CHA outreach team and Caltrans and community volunteers. And the business district, right, is or the businesses um who all donated supplies and we brought in volunteers to to clean out that area. Since then, um the CHA outreach team visits the visits that person. At least once every couple of weeks to make sure that it does not continue, that that it doesn't get bad as bad as it was. So, long story short, yes, there it's certainly a big, um it's something that I think about all the time is how can we take that and scale it out? To make sure that all of the community can experience that same sort of community service, right? It's complicated again because the 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 outreach team that's really. Willing to do something like that is the CHA outreach team and they are. Their funding is starting to sunset fairly fairly quickly. So we're, like I said, we're working really hard to try to find a way to keep them going. I think that they're a very strong partner. And um and I also feel like we should figure out how we can do a community trash cleanup. Is there any way we could work with, you know, waste management to where the there's no charges if if the community is doing such don't um such cleanups? So those, that's that's on my on my to do list. That's actually on year two action plan. I, we're in the process of pulling all of the information to to draft year two action plan. And it's one of my, one of my top things when it comes down to serving people who are living outside, because I agree. The number one reason why um electeds feel the need to to have to move forward with a cleanup is because it's the cleanup part. It's not the people part, it's the cleanup part. So if we can find a way to address the needs of both the housed and the unhoused. I think that that's the the first step is is just trying to find a way for us to to live together and and not impact each other too much. And and I think the trash is the number one reason. So um stay tuned Supervisor Phillips. I'll I'll let you know once I come up with a plan.
Let me, let me just say, I I I'm sure we could get waste management, the other ones to come behind us on that. And 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 maybe we expand the uh service on on Smith and Enright to uh to expand a little bit more to help with that. But if we were able to keep the area cleaned up for the people. And and they didn't see the the unsightlyness, I think my community would be much more willing to get in and work with to to help provide services and things. It's the reaction to the to the mess that they see. But if we were able to work on that issue. I I think a lot of the resistance to the homelessness uh in our community would would dissipate. But thank, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Phillips. Um and I'm I'm trying to see whether or not my colleagues are going to put their hands up. Okay. And I think Wendy, were you, go ahead.
I just wanted to appreciate the work that you've done so far, Roxanne, Roxanne, with all the partners. I know getting that uh wind down in King City announced last week was big. And as we move forward, I want to join in on the comments of Supervisor Phillips. One of the driving forces for us in King City is the fires. We hear a lot about needing to protect the river. And we're not allowed to touch the river as its private property through South County. Yet at the same time, we're watching a lot of the trees in the river get cut away for firewood. And so the, it's quite literally disappearing and making the issue more visible. And then the fires being started are escaping fire pits and nearly burning out homes. So it's been a major challenge for us. And I think the win of getting a project in South County. To help address the challenges we have there is one that should be lifted up as we see the need for additional projects throughout our county and communities. So that we can all take care of folks uh where they are. And so just want to appreciate the work that you've done so far to keep the vision countywide. And uh thank you for your work, Roxanne.
Thank you, Sir. Nice to look, Lopez, Supervisor Rudes.
Thank you. Um Roxanne, uh, this is great. And I just want to again shout out to South County, King City, Salinas. Um and even Pacific Grove for the work that they're trying to do to, you know, bring programs and shelter beds and additional housing beds and permanent supportive housing beds into their community. I think it's um it's a huge, huge leap from where we were just a few years ago to have everyone on board, working in in partnership towards solutions. So recognizing and thanking everyone for that. You know, the the board, the other thing I want to acknowledge and thank you for is uh coming to the date, um which I don't have in front of me now, but for the homeless summit. Which is something that this board, um with the city of Salinas, gave direction to move forward with last year when we had a joint meeting. So I know it's been a lot of cats to herd and a lot of pieces to pull together, but I'm really excited to see that that's moving forward. I know that there's some costs associated with that uh summit and that the community foundation has made a commitment to help support that. As has the Coalition of Homeless Services Providers. Um and I did just want to, as part of our discussion today. See if there was a need to have a county commitment of dollars or at least give authority to our CAO. Up to some amount so that if and when that's needed to pull this off, that we can do it right. I do know that there are many of our city council members. I have five cities within my district. Who are, you know, who are interested in understanding these issues better, but just haven't had the information presented to them. In a way that is actionable and that they can work with and bring brings suggested actions back to their council. So I think the summit is a really important um action for us collectively to move forward. Um and want to make sure the county is prepared to support that. Let's see here, the. And and I also, I think, I think it's important and I'm appreciating the conversation today. And I I appreciate the way in which homeless individuals in a community impact the neighbor, the name, the individuals who are in homes in that community. But I do think that it's important that we are thoughtful in how we talk about the crisis of homelessness. You know, the crisis of homelessness isn't for me that I have to drive past a tent and see someone living outdoors. The crisis of homelessness is somebody is unable to um have shelter uh that's safe and secure and affordable. And so as we, as we talk about these things, I think that our words matter and how we, who we're centering in the discussion also matters. So just a point to be aware of and thoughtful, um thoughtful of. So I'm sure there's more to talk about, but I'll pass it on to my colleagues to continue. But thank you for the presentation today, Roxanne, and for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Leho, your hand is up.
Thank you. And I I love having this conversation because we have made a lot of progress. And I want to thank Roxanne for being a great leader, along with our other partners, Dan Baldwin, among many others who have really helped us elevate the conversation. In a compassionate and dignified way. And I think we've taken a good approach. Also, understanding that our community does uh have concerns about the unsightlyness of some of the comments and we try to approach it with with balance. Um also knowing that that um those will also present public health hazards for for the residents and for the community at large. But I, but like all local governments, um we're having staffing shortages and I thought, Roxanne, if you could just. Explain a little bit about your challenges. I mean, all employers are having a hard time recruiting and and staff. And to do this work, you really need the right people who have the right training skills, the right patience. Um the heart has to be in the right place. But I I think that often doesn't get discussed that as we have a lot of expectation and as new resources are coming to local governments and and to the extension to our nonprofit partners. Maybe if you could just elaborate a little about what are your challenges to continue to elevate this work and keep and recruit and retain staff?
Thank you Supervisor Leho. I I do want to take a moment to thank you for your leadership. Being the chair of the Leadership Council for the many years that you have served. And I think that we have been a great, great partners in this work. So thank you, sir, for everything that you do for us. Um but yeah, challenge indeed. The coalition, um actually. My, one of my key staff members was recruited by the state of California's CalICH. So um Cody, if you're there, say hello to Molly. So, you know, we, where we, it's hard, it's hard work. So the the thing about the coalition is we have to understand everybody's perspective and that's the way we'll be successful. And a lot of times, folks who enter into this work, they're really, they're really like from a perspective of doing social work. And we're here for the the clients and we're here for the clients, certainly. But we have to, the way that we, as I mentioned, the way that we'll be successful is really listening to all of the stakeholders. And trying to find that middle ground. And oftentimes that middle ground is really, really small. But if we find it, we'll we'll be able to be um to have some progress. The coalition has had to expand significantly. And through that expansion, we had several seats. We were operating with about twenty five percent of our of our chairs empty during this whole presentation, all the time that I. That it took to get all of that stuff done. I have been doing a lot of the work even myself. We now, we had to hire um data analytics team. Because we wanted to make sure that we were informing our decisions using real local data. And we wouldn't be able to do that with without having folks to actually do that. And then, as I mentioned, we wanted, we had to hire a person who's really focused on equity because sometimes we just move so quickly. That we don't really realize um that some that some populations may get left behind, right? So having a person in-house to pay attention to the fact that, or paying attention to if we're being equitable in the decisions that we make. Is really, really important during the during the distribution of vaccinations, when we were trying to get those out to people who are experiencing homelessness. The equity team was really the driving force to make sure that we didn't forget about smaller jurisdictions, especially in South County. There, you know, historically, uh the South County has been um underserved and and having an equity team. And make sure that 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 doesn't happen in the future.
Thank you so much for your response.
I'm not done yet. Um I did, I do want to just also express. I'm not done yet. I did, I do want to just also express support for the homelessness summit. Those are not only important to get people on, on the same page, hopefully on, on policy and get elected leaders to understand what, what the plan is. But I, I think it's, it's part of a larger converse, larger effort to create those homelessness champions that as we elevate the discussion and we, we, we get more people involved in the conversation, hopefully it does create that political will for elected leaders all across Monterey County to be willing to be a little bit more courageous, knowing that we, we have examples where we've done good projects and we've done them right. We've managed them right. And I also want to take an opportunity to extend my thanks to King City and Mayor LeVar and their city manager there because we weren't there three or four years ago. And here we are. They just got that 13, $14 million grant from the state to have their first major project take place in King City. And that's progress. And I want our community to understand it doesn't happen overnight. It's very intentional. We have to support each other as elected officials, support each other in communities. I know our Leadership Council gave some money towards that project. So did the Department of Social Services and Monterey County supported the King City project. But these are all examples of us supporting each other in our efforts. And then we're making progress as a whole and, and countywide. So I, I want to make sure that we, we support Roxanne and making sure we get our first homelessness summit off the ground that is successful because it does have a ripple effect in other ways as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor. Just a few comments on my own before we draw this to a conclusion. There are several things that I worry about in this regard. And Roxanne, I just so empathize with you as far as finding staff. Coming from a full-time career in the not-for-profit sector, I know as well that salaries are never at the prime for nonprofit workers. And that adds another dimension to the difficulty of finding and, and retaining staff. So I just applaud you because I know that the people that you are able to recruit are the ones that are simply called to the, the field. And that's not everybody, but those who do are just really wonderful people and giving up a lot. I thank you again for all of the efforts that you've made, both on the homeless summit as well as the other work that you've been doing. And I'm very appreciative of the work that the city of Salinas and the county have done. But I must admit that I'm really hoping that we are going to be able to expand those partnerships within Monterey Peninsula. I think there are a lot of things that are happening, especially along the encampment problems that, that we have not been able to generate enthusiasm about as far as, as, as helping us. An example is there was a fire at the homeless encampment down on the Carmel River near the Rio Road area in the mouth of the valley. And you know, it's causing problems with the people who live there who are now having some issues getting their insurance renewed because they viewed the, they view it as a, an absolute, just a problem that exists when you have people who are having illegal campfires, et cetera, right behind your housing development. So that's one of the things that we've been concerned about. And I'm hopeful that we might be able to take a look at beyond the, beyond Salinas and beyond South County to look over at North County and to look at the Monterey Peninsula as well. The other area that I'm worried about, you know, it's one step up from homelessness, but I'm very fearful about people falling back into, to homelessness as we emerge from the pandemic. And so many of the social programs that we have that have been able to keep people in their homes during this difficult time, when those programs start to phase out, I'm concerned that we're going to see more people losing their housing due to rent increases and evictions. So my hope is that we're going to be able to do everything that we can to keep people housed and to increase truly affordable housing opportunities. That means that we're going to need to be creative and flexible in how we build housing in our county. Means moving away from the traditional development models that don't yield the kind of housing that would be affordable to the people who need it the most. And I don't know if Cody is still on the line, but it looks like he is every time I have an opportunity to speak to anybody who is any place within the governor. I just always want to please encourage conversation between the housing and community development people and the Department of Water Resources because we cannot build housing affordable or otherwise if we do not have water. And there is an issue within the Department of Water Resources that makes it very difficult for people in Monterey County to be able to do that. So again, I just thank you so much for the work that you're doing. I think this is very thrilling and exciting. And I believe that we're moving forward now to having the public summit take place. And I believe that we are receiving the update. And I am not clear where we stand on next steps, but I will go back to you, Nick.
Madam Chair, thank you. Yes. And we appreciate Cody and Roxanne for their presentations this afternoon. And Roxanne is in the thick of planning the summit, as you well know. We've got some partners there. The Monterey Bay Economic Partnership is involved. The Community Foundation is involved. Obviously Roxanne is coordinating it. Our board offices are involved. County departments are involved. It, the, the summit's going to be really important that we get as much agency involvement from, as you said, Madam Chair, throughout the county, the various cities. And that's really going to be one of our goals as well as the providers. And to have it be a really intensive, solution-oriented day where we can walk away from that summit with some real tangible action steps. There may well be some costs. I know that the Community Foundation, and I believe MBEP have contributed some money. What we'd like to do is come back when we have a better fix on what those costs might be for an allocation of funding. That we may also want to assist in some other areas such as the outreach team issue. And we'll take a look at that and bring that back to the board. We'd like to know if the board has any direction or any feedback you'd like to give us about the summit other than what you've already given us, which was really helpful.
I think that we have covered things, but it looks like Mr. McKee would like to say a couple of words. So I'll let him do that before we close the item.
No, just, just in, in general, as Nick was talking about direction, you know, each board member might make comments and some, you know, that's not necessarily direction from the board. So if there's any specific direction you want to give, that would be appropriate in, in the form of a motion.
Yes Supervisor Askew?
Yeah, thank you. So I think that, you know, as far as direction, I think that the things that I understand we're talking about for the summit would be a hybrid event that allows for some of our elected officials to not have to travel as far. So there are some costs associated with that, having something in person and online. I think that having the, the partnerships that we've, you know, I've seen that, I'm not sure if there's a draft agenda that's been circulated, but the conversations that I've had all seem to be lined up with what, what makes sense and the conversations that we've had here today. I would like to, I think, you know, in terms of direction, give a sort of a number of up to $15,000. So when you return, tell us where to find that, those dollars. But I'm comfortable and, you know, contributing with county funds up to that amount to support the funds that have been contributed elsewhere and to allow us to, I think, go out and solicit some sponsorship, support for the event. And I think the other thing would be just encouraging each board member to, you know, personally invite the elected city and school board members who are in our districts to, to join us to both to learn more, to ask questions and to find specific actions that they can take back to their, to their jurisdictions. I'm not sure if that's clear to everyone or if there's anything more to add or if we need to make that a formal motion.
Can you tell me, sorry Supervisor, can you tell me what this number was that you said?
I said up to $15,000, which is I think what the Coalition has provided thus far. And the Community Foundation is right in that range.
Okay, okay. And then I want to go back to Mr. McKee and just say, is it appropriate for us to try to find that money today? Or is this something that we should be bringing up at the April 5th meeting?
Right. Or when, or either the April 5th meeting or, or when Mr. Chulos brings back another agenda item at a future meeting, either, either time.
Okay. So is it possible that we would have the agenda item by April 5th?
Probably not.
Probably not.
But we might be able to give some indication on, at the budget meeting. At least, at least get some direction at that budget meeting as far as where the, the source of funds, basically.
Okay. So yes, yes.
If I may just add, you know, I think that in, in terms of planning an event like this, it would be really helpful for the Coalition to know what kind of budget they have to work with. And the longer we wait to indicate what amount of money we might be comfortable with, the harder it's going to be for them to make appropriate plans with that budget. So that's why I was suggesting that we, maybe if there's agreement or some sort of consensus about an amount that we could indicate that today, take the action at a future date. But if we can provide some, some verbal guidance to everyone.
Sort of a general, yeah. Okay. Thank you for that. And then I think I saw Supervisor Lejo. And then Lopez is down.
Yeah, I want to, I want to second and do provide that direction so that they know that we committed to $15,000 and we'll, we'll figure out where it comes from at a future meeting. And we do have time to figure that out because as I said, they moved the, the summit to the summer. But I, I do like the hybrid version because it's not only getting elected officials, but it's other partners. We should be reaching out to school districts. They also have staff that deal especially with homeless families and children. And so, so I think having the hybrid version lets people dial in from work and not have to travel or just community residents, because this should be a larger conversations with our community. People who are concerned, people who want to be hopefully part of the solution, not part of the problem. So I think it's, there's that kind of approach and vision that I think will elevate and help us progress more. And hopefully it would help inspire people wanting to do this work so that when we have a staffing challenges also, that we might get some, some, some more folks willing to step up and, and, and do this kind of work because they see a bigger commitment coming from their communities and their elected leaders as well. So I, I like all, all these options, but I, I do want us to hopefully make this as impactful as we, as we can and, and inviting to as many people as possible utilizing our technology.
Thank you. So I believe Supervisor Ruth Askew, was that a motion that you had on the floor to provide up to $15,000 and we'll find the money later?
I'll make it as a motion.
Oh, thank you. And I'll be happy to second that. Okay. So I'm so sorry, but I've closed community public comment at this point. And I would like to go ahead and take it out and have a rule call vote.
Supervisor Lejo?
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips?
Did you have a? I, the Chair answered the question I'd been getting tests about whether there was going to be public comment at this point.
So if we, I'm so sorry. I thought we had completed public comment.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will be happy to postpone our vote and go back to public comment. And we have one person in the audience who would like to speak. Thank you for putting that forward.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So Wes White, Salinas, Monterey County Homeless Union, also Housing Advisory Committee for Monterey County. Just trying to, I guess, present some solutions. You know, the, the Coalition Homeless Services Providers actually say they have a position paper against sweeps altogether. We could be using that sweep money toward just, you know, bags that are tossed over that, that can be collected outside of the encampment. And people will do that. They're actually doing that in a couple of locations because people just want like that safety and security. And you know, that's, it's, it's not really that hard. They, I think they've earned that validation. You know, I don't want to put a label on them, but they're harmless. They're not homeless. They're harmless. And these folks have already tried to reach out. I mean, we, we have the city of Salinas, man. If you want to talk about the homeless outreach team and what they actually function, they tell people to go, you know, it doesn't matter how little, how much, how clean, how dirty. You just got to go. Did you pay your rent money? Well, then you got to go. And I get paid to get rid of you. And you know, like, like there's a lady that, that was in an RV and she had just parked there and Assistant Chief roll up, hey, you can't be here. There's a 72-hour notice. Where's the legality? And then, and then there's a couple of other RVs down the way. Did the same thing. And you know, it, you can't just, you see how actively we're working against people? And then saying after years later, oh, we finally pity you. You know, maybe you'll make the grade, but that's 5% of people and 95% of people we're abusing. We need to stop doing that. You stop driving people out and validate them. Let them register to vote so they can vote for you or against you. But we need to stop sweeps.
Thank you, Mr. White. And now we have Karen Morgan. If you would like to press star six. There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, it's actually Stacey Elsie Perkins from Gathering for Women. I want to thank the board supervisors for raising this issue and addressing this critical problem that we have in our community as well as the Coalition. I think Coalition is doing some incredible work. I want to just suggest that the wonderful success of Project Tom P in Salinas be considered for the peninsula. I think it's something that we, we really need. And I also want to address the fact that the focus on funding has primarily been on permanent housing. And there needs to be more funding for emergency services as well. You can't just put people directly into permanent housing. It's just not that effective. So thank you all for allowing me to speak and I appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And next we have Tyler Williamson.
Hi, everybody. I am Councilmember Tyler Williamson, speaking as, as an individual here. But I just wanted to highlight Supervisor Adams. You had spoken earlier to exactly the point that I wanted to share, which was trying to find a space here for us to make sure that we're stopping the flow of people becoming homeless. And so we definitely are seeing, you know, people that tend to become homeless are renters because they're unable to be in a position where they might be able to afford a home. And so how can we think about solutions that stop the flow of homelessness so that we can focus our ability on getting folks that are currently being unhoused out of that state? And then I also just wanted to give appreciation to Supervisor Alejo. You were speaking to a little bit earlier in regards to the need for political will and really just thinking bold and creative around these solutions. And I think that there is this really great potential with a lot of us electeds. And I imagine a lot more so as younger generations step up to the plate. So I think it's going to take us all putting our heads together, working together, maybe doing some things that we don't naturally feel comfortable with, to just feel creative and bold and, and energetic about going out there and, and taking care of the needs of the voices that are often muted. So thank you so much for having this conversation today.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. And I really apologize to everybody as far as the public comments. Please forgive me that I did not follow through as I should have done. So why don't we just take it back out? Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to make comment now? And if you're trying to enter through Zoom and you don't have the number, I better make sure I give you that for a while. See. That number is 224-397-747. And you can either raise your hand by, via a star nine to let me know you're out there. And when you do get acknowledged, if you would be able to just press star six to unmute yourself. I'm not seeing anyone else. Ah, yes, here we do. Eloise Shim. Your hand is raised if you would like to press star six to unmute yourself. There we go. Thank you.
Hello, this is Eloise Shim. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, just fine. Thank you.
Okay. So, well, I wanted to comment about the homeless issue. I don't think that Monterey County has really tackled this issue in a good way because the systemic way of tackling it in Monterey County has not been very successful. And there is an article in the weekly, this last weekly about, I think the title is Homeward Bound. And somebody who is the Executive Director of, of Gathering for Women says that, you know, this attitude of NIMBY that we don't want people in our community who are homeless goes on. And it's not compassionate. And it's really shameful when there are resources such as Home Key and other things. And Monterey, well, I guess in Salinas, they've done some of that. But in the peninsula, they really are blocking it. So it's for shame on, for shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you for expressing your opinion, Ms. Shim. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak?
For shame on you.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else. Are you seeing anyone else with their hands raised? Roxanne, am I seeing that you're, that you wish to speak Roxanne?
Yes. Just really quickly, I did want, I wanted to speak to what Stacy said earlier because it is, it is certainly worth mentioning. She's correct. A lot of the money that, a lot of the, the waves of funding that's coming down from the state is really focused on permanent housing. And specifically what we've done in our community is responded with permanent supportive housing, which is, just to be clear for those of you on the call who, who, who want to know, there is a major difference. Permanent supportive housing is for chronically homeless individuals. And the reason why there's been so many jurisdictions that's focused on that is because those are the folks who have been left. And the reason why there's been so many jurisdictions that's focused on that is because those are the folks who have been left outside for a really long time. And they, they, um, they can really benefit from having access to so many supportive services while they're living in their permanent housing program. But a lot of these other programs that are important to our community, transitional housing, emergency shelter, outreach, those emergency responses. There's not much funding out there for that. So it's just something for the board to be aware of. Um, and we'll, like I said, we'll continue, the Coalition and the Leadership Council will continue to try to identify funding streams to keep these folks going. But, um, but it is, it is of concern for sure. Thank you.
Thank you for expressing that thought. Okay, I'm seeing no more hands raised. And I believe I had already had a motion and a second. So we will now go to a roll call vote. Supervisor Lejo.
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips. Supervisor Lopez. Supervisor Root Askew.
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Adams. Hi. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Chulis. And thank you for your help. I'm sorry that I missed.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, that closes down item number 12, and we will now go on to item 13, which is to receive a presentation on the first five Monterey County, uh, annual, 2021 annual report. And we have with us today, I see three. Charles is trying to fix something. That makes me nervous. There we go. I have a feeling they're trying to, uh, fix the echo that we've been having within the chambers today. All right. Pretty impressed. Well, as we, um, complete our, uh, IT technical issues, I will, uh, introduce our first speakers who are coming forward. Lori Medina, the Director of the Department of Social Services. Francine Rodd, who is the First Director of First Five Monterey County. And Nina Alcaraz from First Five Monterey County as well. And just as a reminder, if people are calling in from Zoom, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And then press star six to unmute yourself when you're ready. No, I think somebody turned it off.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair.
Good afternoon, Ms. Medina.
I'm sorry. Good afternoon. It's that kind of day. Okay. Good afternoon. And I said it twice. To the board, uh, we're glad to be here today. I'm Lori Medina, Director of Social Services, and I'm also First Five Commissioner. And it is my pleasure to introduce the First Five Executive Director Francine Rodd. And with her, uh, to walk us through the presentation is Nina Alcaraz, who is the Director of Policy Advocacy and Communication. So with that, Francine.
Thank you, Ms. Medina.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Uh, thank you for your time this afternoon. And as Commissioner Medina said, my name is Francine Rodd. And I'm Executive Director for First Five Monterey County. And I'm here with Nina Alcaraz, who is the Director of Policy Advocacy and Communication. I want to really thank, uh, Commissioner Lori Medina and Supervisor Chris Lopez for their service on the commission. And while we don't have enough time today to talk about everything that First Five Monterey County does, this, this presentation will highlight some of the ways that we are effective in using our resources, managing programs and making a difference. And so if you haven't had a chance yet to review the information in your packet, we have the, uh, Board Report as well as the Community Annual Report. And the Community Annual Report is also available on our website. So in terms of our vision at First Five Monterey County, our programs are collaboratively designed. We do a strategic, uh, planning process that involves the community input and input from our service providers and other systems, uh, leaders in our community. And we do our implementation with community partners. So the vision that the community came up with was that all children reach their unique potential in a family and community that values, respects and invests in early childhood. And the mission of First Five is to enrich the lives of children from the prenatal stage through age five and their families by strengthening connections and advancing quality within a whole system of care and support. In plain words, what that means, and we're learning to be more plain with our language, is that our partners, um, with our partners, we help families make connections to supports and services. And we help systems to better coordinate to support children and families. So who is Monterey, First Five Monterey County? Well, we are an independent public agency that was established in 1998 when Proposition 10 set aside 50 cents from every pack of tobacco products for early childhood systems, programs and services. There are 58 First Fives, uh, one in each county, uh, throughout the state, and there's a state First Five Commission. So each county determines the programs and services that are right for their needs. We sit in the sweet spot between government, nonprofits and private organizations. Perfectly positioned to be able to leverage and maximize both government and community connections. We're accountable to public processes while still being able to be nimble and creative and cost effective. Um, one of the advantages of that is that we aren't part of the county retirement system. First Five Monterey County Commission, um, and, or the state, uh, retirement system. So we are a little bit more lean in that regard. The First Five Monterey County Commission and Committee meetings are open to the public and are, uh, in accordance with the Brown Act. We welcome the public to attend and make comments. We're also fiscally accountable with a high level of accounting standards and the history of clean audits. So what does that mean, um, over the years? And that means that in terms of our staff at First Five Monterey County, we are also experienced and effective. They have deep connections and you'll see them all here with each other and with the community. There's expert, uh, content and institutional knowledge among our team that shows our work for, that shows in our work for children and families in Monterey County. We've been blessed with low staff turnover and the combined years of experience of our program staff is a whopping 181 years. The longevity of our staff is also, uh, something that we're proud of with an average length of time at the agency of over seven years. So we've been strategic with our combination of using some of that talented staff to provide some direct services and also subcontract, contracting out to nonprofits and other entities in order to maximize and leverage dollars and resources. So, uh, that respect has been something that, um, the state has also taken a look at and seen that, um, uh, because of our reputation and our expertise, uh, the staff has been called on to participate on several committees, both at the local and the state level. And, um, most recently, we've been called on to help inform a new state process. Um, Governor Newsom announced the child, or children, sorry, Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative in July of 2021. And it has $4.4 billion investment to enhance, expand and redesign the system of support for behavioral health for children and youth. The Director of the Initiative, who was recently appointed, reached out to us to help design and facilitate focus groups, uh, with parents to identify community voice and experience in helping reshape the mental health system for children zero to five and their families. So with that in mind, we'd like to share with you some comments that Assemblymember Rivas and the First Five Association State Executive Director Jackie Wong shared with us at a recent diaper and COVID supply distribution event a couple of weeks ago.
Well, First Five, you know, in our district, our region, across the state, does such valuable work, uh, such incredible work.
First Five was established because of the science and the research saying that we can actually prevent long-term negative outcomes if we focus on the first five years.
It is an effort that has been prioritized by myself and by many of my colleagues, by the governor, to ensure that we are prioritizing this issue, that we are investing in creating opportunities, uh, to, uh, you know, for all families, for all children, to have access to early childhood education, to have those early interventions is critical, uh, to, uh, future success, uh, for this generation and beyond.
Monterey County First Five is a model for other commissioners, commissions around the state. So we are so grateful for their collaborations, their collective impact framework, and really kind of understanding and targeting their resources to, um, high needs communities. They have phenomenal impact. They don't brag enough about what they do.
We are incredibly fortunate and lucky here on the Central Coast and the County Monterey to have such incredible leaders and organizations and structures such as the First Five, incredibly proactive efforts, uh, to do everything we can to chip in, to collaborate at all levels of government, federal, state, and here at the local level, uh, to make a difference for our most vulnerable families.
So we're really glad that we have been able to serve and support. And he's saying it again. Um, to serve and support the community and very humbled by those words that are said because we don't like to toot our own horn. But over the last 22 years, uh, we have supported close to 600,000 people, uh, 599,859 young children, parents, educators and providers. And some of them are the smiling faces that you see on this slide. And you'll also hear from some of our funded partners that helped to make this possible. In fiscal year 2021, um, alone, we served over 22,000, uh, children, parents, caregivers and providers. And, uh, we're pleased that through that work, parents are, are feeling, uh, better able to support their children. Providers better able to support parents and systems, uh, better able to support providers, parents and children. And that means that children are more ready for kindergarten than their peers. Now, under the pandemic, we have seen, um, obviously that the challenges for the families have been really, really difficult. And it has been hard for all of our children and families. Some examples over the years of where we have been able to be, um, flexible and nimble and met the moment. Included in terms of childcare, um, providing onsite coaching and technical assistance and workforce development. We provided loans to childcare providers when the government contracts were slow to arrive, um, and they were on the verge of closing. Uh, we've worked with Senator Caballero to sponsor and get past bills that forced some changes in the way that childcare is reimbursed throughout the state. And in mental health, um, there's a mental health training that we have been conducting over the last, um, 10 years that has really come in handy under these, um, difficult circumstances these years, uh, this year, these last couple of years, uh, to help to support our workforce. Our Early Childhood Collaborative have also helped to support systems and families, um, to work to meet the services and the needs that they're encountering, that they're encountering. And yet, there are still huge gaps, right? We've all seen them in our systems and supports and our needs. We haven't had enough funding or enough collaboratives to be able to support all the families, especially during the pandemic.
Um, so what Francine talked about, I'm going to continue about what the tradition of responsiveness is, um, currently in our fiscal year 2021 report to you. So let's take a moment, and I don't think anybody really wants to do this for a long period of time, but to time travel and put yourself back in where we were at the start of fiscal year 2021, which would be around July, right? We didn't know, there was still much uncertainty around COVID-19. Our country was facing a racial awakening and Monterey County was affected in, um, by wildfires that summer. So if we remember what that, um, mindset was like, we know that it was really challenging for our community. Um, and I want to especially talk about how it affected our early childhood education workforce. So the pandemic, I think, really highlighted for many of us what, uh, the early childhood field has known for many years. That childcare is an essential service for our community. Um, and early childhood educators, the ones who look after our little ones, really are essential workers also. They are, uh, critical for our economy to thrive because we need childcare to enable our workforce to be able to return to work. Um, and so despite that necessity of childcare, there were many challenges that surfaced for early childhood educators, including lack of access to vaccines and accessing, um, supplies that would help keep children and families healthy and safe. And which added to additional operating costs for them. So First Five served as a lead partner for the Childcare and Wellbeing COVID-19, COVID-19 Response and Recovery Coalition. And that helped to work to improve the system supporting childcare educators. Childcare, uh, workers work diligently to stay open for other essential workers like our farm worker population. Um, that would require them to, you know, very similarly work hours of 4:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Um, and that made things like finding vaccine appointments very difficult. Because if you recall, at the beginning of the pandemic, um, vaccines were hard to come by. Clinics were often held during hours when most of those workers, childcare workers, couldn't access them. So we worked together with the Office of Education, with Bright Beginnings, with the Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation in Centro Binacional to sponsor vaccine clinics. And, um, we vaccinated essentially over 2,000 childcare and education providers, um, especially on weekends and evening clinics. So similar to how there were farm worker clinics that, that met farm workers where they were at, we also met childcare workers where they were at when they needed us. Um, I mentioned briefly about how there was, uh, increase in operating costs for childcare workers. This includes additional cleaning supplies, diapers, wipes, um, and that was, um, that, those cleaning supplies, uh, were very expensive and, and hard to come by. So we helped provide some of those to reduce those costs for childcare providers. So they wouldn't have to themselves cut into their already low profit margins. Um, this ultimately helped keep childcare centers in Monterey County open. Um, that's not true for most of the nation. There were many childcare centers that closed down. Um, and we didn't have that same experience here, thankfully. And then we continue to hope to support our childcare workers in that way. And then also just in supporting when there were additional protocols that came forward, we have technical assistants that provided one-on-one coaching to centers to help them, help, uh, children and families with distance learning. And then eventually with socially distanced learning, um, when they attended childcare. So one program that we're especially proud of, um, is partnering to support parent advocacy. So First Five Monterey County is the co-founder and the fiscal agent for the Central Coast Early Childhood Advocacy Network. And the network rallies early childhood advocates from Monterey, Santa Cruz and San Benito. And we have currently over 400 individuals that have joined and are connected with our network. And there, the network is led by parent voices and we host several events throughout the year, um, including a parent power summit. We have a policy and learning community. I'll tell you a little bit more about later. Uh, we also do legislative visits with all the California elected officials. And in 2020, we hosted our first annual town hall with Congressman Jimmy Panetta. And I'd like to play a video for you of parents, childcare educators and community members that participated in the town hall, uh, which was titled Centering Children and Families at the Heart of Recovery.
Como madres, nuestras prioridades son nuestros hijos y todos los niños de nuestra comunidad.
Somos padres, alumnos y familias, impactados por todas las situaciones que estamos viviendo.
We are community members concerned about our children and youth given these stressful, uncertain times and the effects it will have on their mental health.
Somos mujeres madres y es demasiado esfuerzo bajo la pandemia.
There is a lot of stress, having to learn new skills for children, parents, caregivers and students.
But we see a lack of funding and support for children with disabilities and low income families.
Communities of color are disproportionately affected by the intersection of present pandemics.
I grew up in an immigrant family with a lot of tough times, but with my mom's support, I was able to attend nursing school. And, you know, be able to see how young children are isolated and struggling through COVID.
So we request that you prioritize funding for schools to be able to reopen safely.
Be even more aggressive in leveling the playing fields for all our children by investing in their future.
We ask you to dedicate funding to ensure trauma and form services for all children and families.
Nuestra comunidad necesita involucrar más a las personas de bajos recursos económicos e incluir líderes representando a la comunidad, además de implementar maneras más efectivas y justas e iguales para ayudarlos en lo que necesitan.
Y se necesitan invertir más en nuestros niños, que son el futuro del país.
Nos gustaría que los niños tuvieran una calidad de educación y servicios gratuitos accesibles para todos los niños y centrar a los más vulnerables como prioridad.
More investments to make schools safe enough for kids to be together, learning not just reading, writing and math, but also how to be healthy, safe and connected.
We're strong and capable and we've taken on more and more responsibilities.
We're strong and capable, and we've taken on more and more responsibility during these challenging times. We believe our elected representatives can provide more relief now and more respect.
Pedimos empatía y equidad para todos. Gracias.
Thank you for these spaces, the community, the parents who can speak their own language.
So I want to thank you all because I know that working in a team is powerful and we will do our best together.
So Nina exhibited an example of the First Five humbleness because actually the idea for the whole Central Coast Early Childhood Advocacy Network was hers. And so that's an example of what can happen with someone who has a great idea and moves forward with it. Somebody else gets out of the way and lets them move forward with it. So in terms of our early childhood collaboratives, which is another area that's been responsive to community requests for helping connect families to resources. There are five of them. One in Paharo, one in Castroville, two in Salinas, and one that supports South County. This past year, more than ever, families and children needed intensive supports to help them navigate through the various challenges they faced. First Five Monterey County Early Childhood Collaboratives were there, helping families access services and supports during the pandemic. They continued to provide their regular services, which included screening and assessments, care coordination, virtual home visits, and play groups. But they also brought in their response to include food vouchers, grocery gift cards, diapers, housing support resources, and advocating for employment protections. They also provided technical assistance when the digital divide became more pronounced and more visible during shelter in place. We also support capacity building for our community because the quality of service delivery is very important. And so we pride ourselves whenever possible on making sure those services use current research and best practices. So these are some examples of the trainings that you see on the screen there. We provide support to CARES, which is a, actually the, what are they?
They're the Counselors.
Counselors at MPC and Hartnell to provide technical assistance and support. We also support Quality Matters, which is a project out of Monterey County Office of Education, technical assistance in the childcare centers themselves, Circle of Security, Briando Portas, and facilitating attuned interactions are some examples of those trainings as well that we do. So our longest and most intensive training is our mental health series. With growing feelings of isolation and other mental health issues continuing to emerge in our community, especially due to COVID and the COVID pandemic, we've seen a need for the increase of our training series. So the Infant-Family Early Childhood Mental Health Training Series offers knowledge about the unique needs of infants and young children, along with skill building and practical expertise for professionals that work with children throughout Monterey County. And this past year, we had 128 early childhood professionals participate and build their knowledge and expertise about the social, emotional developmental needs of children and infants. The program has a history of high success in achieving this goal, with 98% of the participants reporting that participation in the program resulted in their increased knowledge of how to work with children and their families. This training ensures that the workforce servicing our children and families are able to provide mental health services in a way that's culturally appropriate and rooted in each family's needs. So there on the screen, you see a snapshot of our financials from fiscal year 2021. You'll see that combined with the programs and services, when we combine that with evaluation, which helps us understand if we're making a difference, that's 91% of our funding that goes to those two services and supports. So as we look to the future, Nina is going to tell you a little bit about a couple of the programs, and I'll close out with the mental health. What's how we've been expanding our mental health training this year.
So I know that we've been discussing fiscal year 2021, so that ended, you know, in June. And so we're already halfway done with fiscal year 2122. So I feel safe to say that I can give you a hint of what we're currently working on and what you can look forward to in our next annual report. One of those programs is dual-language learning. Dual-language learners make up over 60% of California students. And studies have shown that early bilingualism can lead to improved academic outcomes and executive functions, like the ability to focus and exhibit empathy. So First Five Monterey County has partnered with the Monterey County of Education and First Five California on a dual-language learner program. So we currently work with about 45 in-home childcare programs that serve over 300, like around 336 children ages zero to five. We work with the professionals to support them with using books and other tools of how to engage young people in both English and Spanish. And we in turn also send them home with these books and activities with their parents so that the learning continues, not just in their childcare setting, but also at home with them. And we have heard beautiful stories of the impacts that this has had with families, where parents are having deeper engagement with their children, they're excited about storytelling, they learn about their history. And like, we heard from one parent that she, through this program, has been inspired to re-enroll in English classes so that she too could be bilingual. You'll also hear from the Central Coast Early Childhood Advocacy Network. We received a grant from All In for Kids, which is coming out of the Bay Area for over, I can't remember the exact amount, but I'll be able to share that with you at the next report. But because of this grant, we've been able to grow the program by leaps and bounds. And especially, we're finding that parents are hungry to understand the political system, and they're hungry to raise their voices up to affect it. One example of how we're seeing that that's coming up is a policy learning cohort that we piloted last year, where parents and community members can learn about the legislative system, the importance of advocacy, and the power of storytelling. Parents go through this policy learning cohort, and then they're able to feel empowered and equipped to go into visits with our California legislators. Last year, since it was our pilot for fiscal year 2021, we kept it small to only about eight participants. We just opened our registration for this year, and we're already at around 50 people that are interested in taking it and more that are wanting to participate as the number keeps growing every day.
So we like to think that because of some of that advocacy, that that helped at the state level to help increase the emphasis on and the knowledge around the importance of these areas and the efforts that have been happening. The other piece I want to just give you a little bit of a teaser on is around the mental health training. So in addition to childcare, the pandemic has highlighted the importance of mental health. And we all have had, have experienced persistent and pervasive adverse experiences over the last couple of years. What we need to also recognize, obviously, is that our children have as well. I was at a training last night with over 100 people. That was from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. so that, again, our childcare providers could attend. People are hungry for this information. And one of the things that the presenter told us about, she said, you know, she did a lot of metaphors. And she did this metaphor where she said, you know, people who have adopted dogs or from the specie might bring a dog home, and they might notice that that dog might end up being afraid of a certain type of a person or an experience or something, like folks who have a beard or come to the door with a hat. And they recognize and think, okay, something happened to that dog in their, in their experience or their childhood or their puppyhood that made them afraid of this kind of a person. And so that things trigger them. And it's like, why don't we think of that with children? Why do we feel as if they don't remember, or they don't know, or they don't feel, when of course they do? And part of that is because we don't want to believe that they would hold on to those negative experiences that they have in their lives, but they do. And so what we need to know is how to support them to be able to move from those persistent historical trauma situations to proceed and to have a successful life. So those are some of the things and the experiences that we have been able to bring to our community. We have, over the years, connected with all of our, and we don't do it alone. We have our community partners, and you'll start to see them on the screen now because we have been innovative and strategic. We make things move behind the scenes. You may not see us because, as Jackie said in her quotes, we're not out there touting and taking credit. We just keep our nose to the grindstone, and we do our work behind the scenes to help to support the children and families and the systems in Monterey County. And so First Five is there, behind each of those organizations and entities, and helps to connect the web of children and support in our collaboratives. But more importantly, you'll also see us here in the eyes and the smiles of these families that have been touched by our efforts. So I want to thank you again for your time today, and Nina and I would be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much for your presentation. The pictures alone just speak volumes of the work that you do. And Francine, I can tell you, from having the opportunity to interact with folks at the state level, you are a legend. You really are. You and the team that you have built make a significant impact, a significant impact on all the other First Fives in California. So once again, putting Monterey County at the top of the pile is really, really appreciated. Let me see if my colleagues have comments or questions, and let me go by some kind of order this time. I'm usually turning to the right, but let me go down here. Supervisor Phillips, any comments or questions before we go out to the public?
No, I appreciate your presentation as always and very thorough things. And I think we've all come to appreciate how important what you're trying to do is. I can't remember error sentencing a young kid to prison who really started off and thrived well in elementary school. Zero, you know, so anyway, appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner?
I don't like to disagree with staff, but sorry, Nina, I have to do it. You talked about dual-language learners being more empathetic. My two-year-old doesn't care when it's bedtime, when it's time to wake up, so I have to disagree on that front. But everything else was extremely well said. I know that we survived the work of the last couple of years together, and I do think that all that is done by teamwork. And so knowing that Supply Bank and, you know, all of our other partners throughout the county, including the Food Bank that helped us distribute things in those critical times when we needed hands, right? Just hands to deliver. I'm just so appreciative of the work that you all continue to do on behalf of the families in Monterey County, knowing that that strong start is what's critical for our kids. We still have work to do, and we know that. We don't, we don't say that the work is complete and that we've accomplished everything we set out to do because the work is still in front of us. And I know that each one of you carries that in your heart and the work that you do every single day. And so I know that this presentation is one of those things we have to do every year, but it is one of the things I look forward to as well, to stop and look back down and see how far we've come. But there's still a mountain ahead of us, but thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you, Supervisor Lopez. Ms. Ruth Askew?
Well, there were times I was like, why did I jump out of my seat, Nina, and cheer about the things that you were sharing about the way in which First Five supported our community during the really dark days of the pandemic? And, you know, we talk about capacity and how we just don't have capacity to work on some of our housing issues and our homelessness issues, and our this issue, and our that issue. And we just need the staff who are able to, like, show up and get the work done. And I think that one of the most incredible stories is that First Five has the capacity, and you've been showing up to elevate the voices of families and parents in a way that, you know, kids don't have lobbyists. And if we ever experience that, I mean, for me, I think one of my takeaways too is that the past couple of years is recognizing that resources are prioritized where there are loud voices of advocacy. And so the way in which First Five has helped bring parents' voices always to the table, always to public comment, always to budget committee, always to where we're having those discussions, it makes a difference. And I'm so grateful and appreciative of the, you know, the fact that we have such a strong First Five here in Monterey County. And Francine, I just want to say, you know, I sometimes I just want, like, let's go, like, let's get going, like, move it forward, like, let's go. And to go slow to go fast, you know, bring everyone along. I think it's, it's clear that there's outcomes that we've achieved because of that path and the intentionality of the work that's happening. So I'm just, I'm grateful for everyone in that larger universe that is really working to support children and parents. We made it through the dark days of the pandemic, but the experience that I can tell you my child has had will stay with him forever, not just, you know, we haven't been affected health-wise, but the mental health and everything around, around our family, everything that's happened to in the periphery of our family's experience will stay with our kids forever. And those parents are going to need support into the future, and our kids are going to need support moving forward, especially the ones who, the babies who were born in the last three years where, you know, the isolation that you experience in those early days is traumatic for the child and their family. And so our work is only, I think, just beginning. And the need for the work that First Five does is only going to grow in the coming years as we see the impact on families. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ruth Askew. Supervisor Alejo?
Yeah, I want to thank and recognize the efforts as well. As long as we keep having children, the work will never end because the next generation comes up, and there's always new challenges as times change. And certainly, the last two years have been very challenging for our kids, but also for our childcare providers. And I was, I enjoyed seeing the report in yesterday's news about Hartnell College stepping up and creating a new kind of apprenticeship program to, I think, waive the student fees, but also provide a stipend for folks who are interested in going into the childcare profession. And I want to say profession because it's really when we're trusting our kids into these individuals, they have to be highly trained. There's a lot of rules and regulations. And they certainly provide high-quality service. But, but the news story did highlight the greatest challenges, that our childcare providers are paid an average wage of only about $30,000 per year. And today, we had some earlier conversations about wage disparities and how difficult it is for families to sustain themselves in a very expensive county like Monterey County. But, but those conversations need to be recognized, that these are real challenges. And, and I do want to thank Hartnell College for stepping up and really trying to meet a major need and a crisis within our community of trying to facilitate fostering the next generation of childcare providers within our local community. So I want to thank them for that, but I know this is something that we have to keep, keep supporting. And I know First Five and our other partners, I think, we're excited to hear the same news that I did yesterday. And I want to certainly be supportive and applaud Hartnell College's efforts. I think we really need some additional programs like that, perhaps at MPC as well, where we could help meet that need within our, within our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Alejo. And I have just one question before I take it out to the public for comment. And that is just, it's sort of a two-part question. But what do you think are the biggest, is the biggest challenge facing children zero to five and their families? And then what do you think we as a county can do to help mitigate that challenge?
Thank you, Chair Adams, for that question. We actually just had a survey that was done through the Central Coast Early Childhood Advocacy Network that had over 70 responses to it, and it's the largest one that we've had so far related to the priorities. And the number one priority that was identified by the parents is childcare, really to stabilize and strengthen childcare and early learning systems to ensure that every family and essential worker has access to quality, affordable care for their children. And what Supervisor Alejo just mentioned is a big, huge part of that and very key. And it's a, it's a complex issue that involves needing to pay folks the way that they should be paid and remunerated, making sure that there is a workforce there, that there are family childcare provider sites, and that there are centers as well. So Bright Beginnings is a, is a, an initiative of the Children's Council that is actually, that is housed at First Five. I didn't talk about that today because they have their own presentation as part of the Children's Council, so you'll hear more about that. And they were very involved in helping to support the Hartnell project that Supervisor Lopez mentioned and Supervisor Alejo mentioned, sorry. And that we have First Five supports the, as we said, the counselors at Hartnell as well. So it's a team effort, again, in terms of trying to make sure that we're addressing these issues. So that's one. The next is mental health. As Supervisor Askew mentioned, the expanding access to mental health services for children, parents, caregivers, and educators. And that means we're excited to see the groundbreaking a couple of weeks ago for the new center in Alisal, and that's going to be a huge, as Supervisor Lopez said, pour in the bucket. It's not all the way to the top, but it's huge. But what we need is more It's not all the way to the top, but it's huge. But what we need is more communities responses to mental health. More people trained as we're doing with our infant family early childhood mental health to be able to recognize some of the consistent and the persistent trauma that I was talking about, to be able to provide supports and services. More of the collaboratives, the work that the collaborators are doing in terms of assessing and screening and connecting families to those resources and supports is a real key area that we see of a need coming up. Then next is really increasing early childhood programs, funding for those programs like First Five to ensure effective, sustainable systems to support young children and families. And the fourth one was housing and homelessness, providing rental assistance, eviction protections and affordable housing for families. So those are the areas that came up in that survey. And I think it points in a direction that you all are, are headed in and that we need to continue to expand.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Alejo, is that a legacy hand or?
Yesterday, sorry.
Thank you very much. We'll take it out to the public now. Is there anyone in house that would like to make comment?
Hello, Kevin Dayton speaking as a resident of Monterey County. I'm involved as a representative of various business groups. And one of the things I've been hearing for the past couple of years is we have a shortage of labor here. People are having trouble finding employees. And one of the reasons that's often cited is in a, childcare is not affordable or not accessible. And I've had a couple of meetings last fall where we went through charts of 20 different options you could do for childcare. And I realized this is a difficult issue for people to understand. It's a foreign issue to a lot of people because they regard it on a very personal basis rather than a systematic level. I, I did hear that some people were working on a safe, affordable childcare ballot initiative. So I actually got on board with that because my conclusion was if you have a problem, you're going to have to do it. There's a lot of talk about money here. You gotta move beyond money. You gotta move beyond talk and start talking about how you're going to fund these sort of things and what you might want to do. I think all of you as supervisors play a critical role on this because childcare advocates, they, they're in their world. Other people are in a different world and we need more bridges to explain to the people at large how this would benefit the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Next, is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to comment on the item?
I missed my chance.
I'm sorry.
Hey folks, West White community enthusiasts at large. I actually remember one of the first instances I ever had was First Five at, at the Sign Beck Center for Reggio Emilia had an exhibit there for like six months. I was part of my classroom practicum for early childhood education. I actually got it. So, you know, I've, and that, that money aspect is one of the reasons why I couldn't follow through because I was actually shadowing to be like a site supervisor. It didn't happen, you know, and yeah, the way we, we don't put enough money into caring. And caring as a profession is, is hopefully underrated. So any funding you can do toward that? And I mean, this last decade I've, I've watched First Five go and it's just been amazing. Folks have fantastic work and keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. White. And seeing no one else in chambers, I will go to Zoom and I first have Cesar Lara and then Luciana.
Good afternoon, members of the Board Supervisor. Cesar Lara with the Monterey Bay Central Labor Council and Community. Yeah, it's rare that me and Kevin Dayton could be on the same page, but it's, but it is an important topic. When we survey and talk to our membership of union members and community, it's childcare, childcare, childcare. It's one of the biggest barriers we have in the community and this is an economic development issue. This is a, a loose link in our economy that, that we need to address. And I'm really happy with the work that First Five has done and the Children's Council as well, but with, with First Five here on the agenda. And looking forward to the board, like Kevin said, put their money where their mouth is and let's do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cesar. Next we have Luciana and then Claudia.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Luciana De Jesus. I am Charling Guo. I speak Spanish, English and Turkish. I am care coordinator at Centro Nacional para el Desarrollo Indígena Oaxacaña. Centro has been a First Five Monterey County founder partner for a long time and works with families to help strengthen the relationship between partners and childrens. Since the beginning of the pandemic, our organization had to address to meet the needs of families. Activities that were normally done one-on-one were moved to virtual and many families needed to technical assistance to learn how to use virtual tools. Centro worked it with our family partners for the First, First Five Collaborative to help provide training and partners. Parents has told us that coaching helps support the development of new skills and allow them to be more involved in their children's education. One of the things we do with the families, we communicate with them in their own language and do the ASQs. And we also connect them with other services that they need. We are very thankful to the First Five for the support towards our family and towards us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And now we will, we will go to Claudia Gomez.
Good afternoon. My name is Claudia Gomez and a proud parent educator of over 12 years. I'm the Director of Family Services at Door to Hope. For the past two years, I have overseen the First Five Door to Hope Early Childhood Collaborative, which provides direct support to parents of children zero to five by providing child development screenings, parent information and services to children prenatal through the age five and their families. We also help families with referrals and assist with coordination of services. The First Five Collaborative is now giving me an opportunity to raise these family voices and make them a part of our leadership tables and allow them to guide our work and the changes we make to the systems that are meant to support them. With the support of First Five, we're also now training and preparing some of our parents to learn about how systems work and to share their own stories in legislative and community spaces and become an integral part of our county's leadership teams. I have also participated in the First Five Infant Family Early Childhood and Mental Health Training Series for the past eight years. Through the training series, I continue to build a quality team of professionals that learn about the new research and best practices around supporting families in mental health wellbeing. I have joined a community of providers throughout the county that share in the same philosophy and are learning and growing together and providing cohesive services throughout the county. The tools and information we learn from the training series directly impacts the work we do with our families. Our families receive evidence and strength-based support that help the entire family reflect on their experiences to help them build lifelong resilience. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And now we will go to Shanna Watkins. If you can press star six to unmute yourself. There we go.
Okay. First, pardon the background noise. I am in the middle of an airport, but I felt that it was very important to speak for First Five. My name is Shanna Watkins. I'm the Executive Director of Early Development Services, which is one of the largest center-based childcare providers in Monterey County, both for family childcare homes as well as center-based programs. We, I've been working with First Five for over 15 years since pretty close to the beginning and getting through this pandemic since we stayed open serving families. They've been instrumental in supporting us with information, our staff with mental health supports. The support for the family childcare providers comes directly from them. And there's a trust built for First Five because they are not a government entity in the eyes of the childcare community. So we feel strongly about them, about the services that they provide and the support that they've been provided and hope that the initiatives they're putting forward and the support that they're getting continues on because we need it. We are not going to survive as a childcare community without somebody leading the way in our county. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I'm going to close public comment with that and see if there's any comment. Yes, sir.
Just one final piece that wasn't mentioned in the presentation, but I know we all know, but it's critical to have on the record, which is the majority of First Five's funding comes through the tobacco tax, which is being reduced given the fact that we're doing a great job of educating our youth and our public on the risks and dangers of the usage of tobacco. And so as we move forward, that number, the six billion is going down. And so we have to be very mindful of the challenges that lay ahead for First Five as an agency and our communities as a whole. Is the work that they do is that synaptic tissue between all these different agencies is at risk when that funding is at risk. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. I'm seeing no more hands raised. So with that, I will close the item. I don't know that we need to have a motion on this or a vote on it, but we will receive the presentation with great thanks and appreciation for everything that all three of you do and Mr. Commissioner up here as well. So thank you so much for the presentation. It was really wonderful. And now we will move on to item 14, which is to, we have a presentation, yes, by Melanie Bredy. And we're going to receive Monterey County General Plan Implementation and Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
Good afternoon Supervisors. Melanie Bredy with the Housing Community Development Department here today with Darby Marshall, who's also with the HCD as our interim Housing Program Manager. Bear with me one second. So while I share on my Zoom from my laptop. On April 1st of each year, the county is required by state law to submit an annual progress report for general plan implementation or GPI, you'll see referred to in the presentation, and housing element progress. For 2021, our housing element update summary, unfortunately, we added no new units to our RENA count in 2021. That said, we were able to issue building permits for 95 above moderate income housing units. We also issued 99 planning permits, which were distributed as in the slide. SFD stands for single-family dwelling, ADU stands for accessory dwelling unit. And we did have one project with 60 units that was five, that were individual buildings with five plus units each. So I mentioned the 95 building permits that were issued. We had 253 certificates of occupancy issued. A large share of those in single-family dwellings. We did have two larger projects that had five-plus unit buildings included in there. And they also included some smaller unit buildings as well. There were no county-owned sites sold leased or otherwise disposed of. So tracking along our RENA count for the fifth cycle, 2015 to 2023, in the, the total units to date, while we have total units exceeded the total unit count, those were in predominantly above moderate units and we still have 459 units remaining distributed in very low, low and moderate income units required to meet those RENA counts for the current cycle. Moving on to general plan implementation, there were no amendments processed to the 2010 general plan nor the 1982 general plan in 2021. That said, there are a couple of amendments that are in progress with relation to cannabis and accessory dwelling units. Talking more broadly, not just about general plan implementation, but implementation of our entire 2021 Long Range Planning Work Program or work program, I'll refer to it as. We did make significant progress implementing a number of the 2021 identified work program priorities as well as, as I mentioned, those activities implementing the general plan, which are indicated with the GPI. So HCD is not the only department that implements general plan policies in the Long Range Work Program. County Administrative Office houses the county's sustainability program and is lead for the Community Climate Action Plan Development, which progress was made on in 2021. Staff is currently negotiating a consultant contract for the Castroville Community Plan Update with the Nexus Fee Study. Those costs are higher than we had anticipated and so we are currently looking at utilizing additional grant funds that we have awarded as well as seeing if a Castroville Traffic Mitigation Fund could be eligible for funding a portion of that as well. We have released a single request for, or are drafting a single request for proposal for three elements for general plan. The housing and safety elements, which are to be updated by December 2023, and a new environmental justice element, which will be developed on that same timeframe. Looking ahead, we have prepared an augmentation in anticipation of that work that'll be coming through to you through the budget process this year. Continuing work for 2021, we did have a continued focus on cannabis as well as vacation rental regulations and you'll continue to see progress in those arenas in this upcoming year. Staff was able to work on many activities that had been underway or arose as priorities during 21, but that weren't officially included in the work program for 2021. And these lists, some of those. I will note there were a few inconsistencies between the formal work program list that was provided last year and some of the projects discussed in the staff report. We're referring, when I say it was or was not included, to the formal work program list. Moving forward, we've made sure that there's not those inconsistencies between the two. So apologies if it confuses anybody. And then also as a part of our advanced planning team, we also handled two large, the environmental review for two large capital improvement projects in the Lower Carmel River and Lagoon areas, which were underway and made significant progress. And we began work on a small handful of ordinances that arose as priorities through the board referral or other activities throughout the year. And just lastly, we began work with the Resource Conservation District of Monterey County, processing two projects that are geared towards streamlining permitting for restoration and fire fuel management projects and also began doing some SB 9 housing legislation mapping in this past year. So as we look ahead for 2022 and our work program priorities, the advanced planning team, which I mentioned, includes myself plus six planners and two management analysts. We're focused on policy and plan development, environmental programs, pre-construction for the two large still capital projects that we mentioned, as well as staff to the successor agency for implementing agreements and obligations at East Garrison. The Long Range Work Program is also supported in addition to the advanced planning team to, by our Chief of Planning, our Director of Housing Community Development, our housing team, as well as colleagues from other departments such as the CIO and Environmental Health, for example. We currently do have four planner vacancies on our team. And by the end of this month, we will have a fifth planner vacancy plus an analyst vacancy. So we're at that third, one-third staffing right now. We do have planner interviews scheduled in the coming week, so we are actively recruiting to fill those positions and we will be very aggressive in, in recruiting and getting those positions filled. I did want to flag that staff did propose to continue to advance priorities and tasks outlined in the five-year work program as resources allowed in a general prioritization, addressing board priorities, state and federally legally mandated activities, task funded with awarded grant funds, as well as general plan implementation priorities and then other tasks and, and priorities that arise. It, it's not a strict rule of thumb. We certainly, for example, would never compromise a legally mandated deadline because we've got any kind of conflicting board policy. We would inform the timeline for the board policy referral based on our need to meet those state mandated timelines, for example. And we do anticipate making significant progress on these current active and high priority projects on this slide in the coming year with our existing staffing resources. So this slide, this next set of high priority activities have significant to-date expenditures or effort and/or they have secured grant funding either through the county directly or through our partner agencies. And we do anticipate continuing and significant progress on these projects as well in the coming year, again with our existing staffing resources and our partners. You can expect to see continued momentum on vacation rentals, cannabis, Carmel River free, the community plans that are underway as well as other activities. And that said, how far along we get into our 2022 goals will certainly depend on our ability to initiate some of the lower priority, not low priority, just relative inline, lower priority, dependent on staffing, how quickly we can get new staff up to speed and in some cases, funding, which I'll discuss briefly. how quickly we can get new staff up to speed, and in some cases, funding, which I'll discuss briefly. So, we did prepare a cost estimate that includes staffing consultants of approximately three-point-four million dollars to implement the twenty-twenty-two long-range work program, um, as we've laid it out. To that end, approximately one-point-two million dollars in grant funds are anticipated and available to fund, uh, a portion of that work, predominantly the consultant costs related to, um, the implementation activities. We have augmentation requests that are coming through the budget process that should be coming before, uh, one way or another, uh, through that process to the board of nine-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars, uh, for, I believe, four or five of the different, um, long-range planning activities. Um, and then general fund funds, staff time, uh, predominantly staff time, and is a part of the, the proposed budget that will be moving forward. There are a number of items that are still to be determined in terms of the costs, and, uh, once certain variables have been worked out, you may see us come forward if we're, as we're able to make progress with, um, additional funding requests if needed in the current, uh, upcoming fiscal year, um, that just aren't known at this time. So, in addition to the work program that was included in your packet today, there's a few other activities that have been identified. So, at the March ninth, uh, Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission considered the annual progress reports, as well as the five-year work program, and they discussed, uh, the Planning Commission specifically discussed the importance of the general plan implementation activities receiving high priority in the work program. The current work program before you does prioritize those general plan implementation activities for two-thousand-and-ten implementation. Also, in its action, the Planning Commission recommended that the board approve and submit the annual progress reports, and made a specific request to include mention of the approach that staff will take to implement the nineteen-eighty-two general plan policies. The Planning Commission further initiated a referral to staff to return to the commission with the proposed approach, um, to determine and codify, um, how those needed updates to the nineteen-eighty-two general plan, which governs the coastal areas, uh, where there are gaps or not coverage in the local, uh, the coastal land use plans that have been adopted, um, how that will be addressed. Uh, the primary missing elements, uh, are with respect to noise and climate change and greenhouse gas emissions that aren't addressed in that nineteen-eighty-two plan. Staff is recommending at this time that we assess the approach and discuss that suggested approach with the Planning Commission in this current year, and that next year's update to the work program would incorporate activities as appropriate related to that nineteen-eighty-two general plan updates. In addition, the CIO received approximately one-point-seven million dollar grant to support a couple of environmental analyses related to cannabis operations and, and ordinances. Um, this omission was an oversight, and staff does recommend that we add those activities to the current work program for, uh, year twenty-two to twenty-three. Uh, lastly, the Historic Resources Review Board, or the HRRB, um, has expressed their desire and interest to have staff move forward with an update to the historic preservation plan. Um, the current work program has identified that as a project priority, but not until twenty-twenty-five. So, staff does want to support the HRRB's desire, and we recommend that we assess in the current year the approach that we would take to complete this task, and as time allows, initiate work on the matter in this current year, and that we then return for next year's update and work program to include this activity as a priority activity in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So, just orienting you and the public, there's a, um, fair volume of materials supporting the, and long-range work program and general plan implementation. Attachment C is the five-year work program summarized in a matrix that does include references to policies, um, and other, um, legal mandates that we're operating under. Attachment D includes the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three work tasks, um, as including the funding requirements and resources, and attachment E is the five-year work program details. Uh, we included those for the year one and year two priorities, and our goal will be for next year to have detailed sheets for all five years' worth of the work program. So, with that, staff recommends that the board find that the draft annual report is not a project, and, under sequo, that you approve the twenty-twenty-one annual progress reports. Authorize the Housing Community Development Director to submit those reports to the state, um, as well as provide direction to staff on the five-year work program, including our twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three priorities. And with that, staff is available for questions if you have them. Thank you. Thank you. Questions at that end of the desk?
Yeah, when's my Castroville Community Plan gonna, uh, get rolling, uh, and where is it behind the Moss Landing Plan?
Sure, if I may through the chair, um, our current timeline, we anticipate to be under contract by summer and to have work starting on Castroville Plan, um, by summer to early fall at the latest.
Thank you.
And you, your special request?
What about mine? No, uh, just wanted to say, because every time we get an opportunity, I think it's critical that we call out opportunities, uh, that we may see within for future legislation, and when we look at the RENA numbers, and specifically, some of the investments that we, as a county, have made in South County City's projects for low-income housing, it would always be nice to get a little bit of credit in terms of investing those dollars, uh, for those who don't know, there, well, a few years back, we did invest in ten permanent supportive units in the city of Greenfield as part of a larger project. And as we look at the need for permanent supportive units, as we heard so much about today, and the homeless, uh, presentation, I just, I, I see that back piece, or it would have been nice when those eventually do get developed to grab a little bit of that RENA, uh, figure, seeing as we're making that investment. But just wanted to take that opportunity, thank you for the work to make that happen, but wish we'd get a little credit on that, and thank you, Darby.
Thank you. Supervisor Rudez, you?
Yes, thank you, um, I, I'll echo, um, Supervisor Lopez's comment. Um, I don't know if there's a way just even like, mention as an asterisk, even though it's not required. There's got to be some way that we can acknowledge the, the partnership work that's happening, because it is significant and meaningful. Um, I didn't see the East Garrison issues called up specifically on the PowerPoint slide, but they, I just want to, for anyone else who's watching, they are specified in it, um, in the attachment, they're in the plan, and there's a lot of work still to be done with, um, sort of next phases of, built out there. Um, so, thank you for all the work that's been going into that, and the really professional level of staff support that we're providing, um, to the community right now for that. Um, the, uh, just a couple of questions on the climate action plan goal on the list, but also I'm looking at page, it goes on slide eight of the PowerPoint, um, but it's also in a number of the, um, the plans. Um, and it references that it's part of the general plan to complete the climate action plan, but I also just want to, I think it's important that we're recognizing that that is part of the EIR mitigation, and that we've already extended the deadline on that, so where the PowerPoint says that we'll consider a plan, um, I believe our requirement as a county is to adopt a plan by the end of twenty-twenty-two. So, I'm not sure, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, and that that expectation is, is clearly articulated. Um, and then, uh, want to acknowledge and appreciate all of the work that's gone on. Uh, Chispa has been moving forward aggressively to put together the funding deck for the East Garrison Affordable Housing Projects, um, and the housing units, and I think that's going to be a significant, um, that's in unincorporated county, um, and the, the need for those housing units is, is, as we heard earlier, significant. So, a shout-out to Chispa for making that happen. And then the other one that I just wanted to, um, point out that I'm interested in is the SB nine mapping, and I look forward to having that come back. But I did have a couple of questions, um, from the staff report, uh, in terms of where we're talking about the, um, sorry, the prioritization of the five-year program as resources allow in the following general prioritization, one being board policy priorities, two being state or federally legally mandated activities, followed by others. And I'm just wondering how you're defining, um, the board policy priorities. What is the, what is the mechanism by which those board policy priorities are being defined as such?
Sure, if I may through the chair, um, so there's different ways, uh, so that includes board referrals.
It does include.
Yeah, it does include board referrals. Um, there's other, for example, um, it's been communicated that affordable housing, we know it's a high priority for, um, moving to the top of our list for permit approvals, and so we consider. Um, so, it's generally policies that the board has, has given clear indication that, that, that realm of policy and/or that particular activity is a, a high priority, um, or there's a formal board referral on, um, and those are things that would have been discussed at the board level, um, and concurred upon.
Okay, great.
And if I may, just for clarification, you had raised the, the, um, with regards to the climate action plan, the consider, um, the plan. I did just want to clarify, we switched the words to consider, because we didn't want to pre-assume that you would approve or adopt. Uh, so, anything where it says consider, the intent is that it goes forward as, unless it says consider draft, the intent is that we would be bringing those forward, and as long as everything's acceptable there, you could then approve and/or adopt the respective plan or policy.
Great, okay, wonderful, thank you. Just want to make sure we're, we're, the intention is there, and we're really clear about what the expectation is, and our requirement really. So, we've got to make sure that that comes back to us with time to get to adoption, um, that space. So, in, so I guess, as a follow-up comment then, when we talk about board policy priorities, um, and being, uh, defined as board referrals, and board referrals taking priority over state or federally legally mandated activities or tasks that have awarded grant funds, I think that, you know, the way in which we've used referrals as a board has changed over, you know, the last couple of years, and, um, there's, you know, we don't really have a clear, you know, way in which we're acknowledging when a referral comes in, that it is now taking precedence over some of these other identified priorities. Um, I think from where I sit, I'm looking to a referral as a way to say, hey, I need someone to pay attention to this, and at least make sure it's on the list somewhere, and at least make sure that we've got, that we understand as a board, that there's an issue that's out there, um, and that it needs to be included maybe in the plan or somewhere around a plan. So, I think maybe for our CIO, a question that I would ask is, um, you know, how we can ensure that when board referrals come forward, and when board direction is given to proceed with a referral, that we're as a, as a county, as a, as a body, it's a city-making, policymaking body, really clear about where those, where that board policy fits within the, the scope of everything else that any department or, um, bureau is responsible for, for handling.
I would say there are two, um, ways to address that, uh, that would be appropriate. One is that we could, we could, um, modify our form to see if we can have a, a way to address that in the form. And then also, I think every department who is, that is responding to a referral should be indicating on that referral response, um, how that fits into their priorities. If they're, if they are unable to complete it within what might seem to be the, the request by the referring supervisor, uh, because of other priorities, they need to, they need to be identifying that in the referral response.
Thank you, and I think I would, uh, reiterate that expectation, so that when I'm, you know, I'm looking to support my colleagues, and when they bring up, uh, an issue and it needs to be addressed, I'm, you know, I'm inclined to be supportive of the things that we're, we're, we're working towards. However, if I don't know that it's pushing something else that we've previously identified as a priority, or that is a state or federally, or that we have resources for off of the list, um, I'm relying on staff or the CIO to inform me of that, so that I can make those, um, thoughtful decisions. So, I just wanted to call that out as a specific, you know, thing, and I think just the way that we're using referrals has changed, so it needs to be something we talk about. But otherwise, thank you for the update and all the work.
Thank you. I really appreciate your bringing that forward, because I, I do really think it's key. There are other things, thank you for the report. I, I, I think that we're making some progress, but there's still a lot of challenges that we face. And although I know that's, this is not the focus of the, of the report, I always just look at those regional housing needs and the allocations for the upcoming housing element cycle. Um, it's not the focus of the report, but it still needs, and it still needs to be adopted by AMBAG. But when I look at the obligations that we have remaining from last year, which I think is four-hundred-and-fifty-eight units, I mean, I'm not putting in a referral that says, please pay attention to RENA numbers, we've got to do something about the housing element. You know, that's not a referral that I've made, but in my heart, I think this is the most important, um, priority that we have, that just looking at the twenty, uh, the twenty-four, twenty, the twenty-four to nineteen, to the twenty-thirty-one, housing element should be one of our highest priorities, because it impacts everything, um, that we do, you know, including the, you know, we've got all the state mandated things that we have to get done, but the RENA numbers, to me, just, you know, keep me awake at night. But I really very much appreciate, um, the, the report. It, you know, outlines very clearly all of the, the, um, the things that you guys have on your plate, and it is not, um, an easy job without all of the staff that you need, so I really hope that that, um, is able to be, uh, accomplished quickly. Supervisor Phillips, your hand.
Yeah, to, to get back to the board referral, uh, I, I, I think we are doing board referrals differently, and it is a, a concern that a board referral from one supervisor, and it gets moved down the road, and all of a sudden, it's taken priority or other things. And to me, we got to bring those back at some point in time before we expend fifty or sixty or seventy thousand dollars in, in looking at this to see if the referral has the support of the entire board, or, uh, at least three members of the board, uh, uh, because, uh, it is a concern that we are spending all these resources, and maybe, uh, it's going to get to the point where we have a vote, we say, well, that's not a direction that, that at least majority of us, uh, didn't want to proceed on. So, I, I, I think we have to do a, um, fax check to see if this is a direction, does the, the board want to keep rolling on this, uh, direction?
So, it's a, a, a very good point. Uh, and Supervisor LaHoe, I don't know if it is your hand up, or you?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, okay, great.
Ma'am, I'm sure if I could just also chime in on that last point, I think that is appropriate for the board to, uh, indicate their support or, or not for a referral moving forward. That, that is part of the reason why we added the referral responses, uh, to the agenda, so that they come in, uh, approximately three weeks after a referral is made, so that, you know, staff can present to the board what their initial estimates of costs and, and time and challenges, so that the board can say yes or no at that point. And that's when we are seeking the board's direction to whether to move forward or not. Uh, and so we do want, at that point, for the board to, to, uh, you know, make their wishes known. Um, it's not, it, that is, that is the time to do it, at the time of the referral response. Um, there might be another time to do it when, uh, down the road, if, if it's a longer-term referral that might come back for a status update or something along those lines, uh, where the board might have the opportunity to, uh, voice their opinion again. But at the referral response stage is really the important time. And then the other thing I would say is, I think that all of us, uh, when we're, uh, trying to look at the workloads that we have when a referral or anything else comes in, I think we have, we all have good intentions and think, okay, I think I can get, you know, think I can get that done within that timeframe, and then other things start coming in, and, and it, and it kind of upsets the apple cart and best-laid plans, as they say. So, I think we need to all recognize those changes and, and, uh, be open to bring, coming back to the board and saying, okay, we had, uh, this come up or that come up, where we just, it just, there wasn't, uh, we, we thought we could get it done within this time, but it just wasn't feasible. We just have to be honest about that.
Yeah, I just worry that maybe we've gone beyond what we intended it to do. If it's sending a message to staff that, you know, you hear, it's a referral, and, you know, it's like the top of the inbox sort of thing. There's a difference between something being important and something being, you know, just, it's the last thing that got on the, on the plate. So, I think perhaps Supervisor, um, Phillips, because your comment was so apt, maybe you should put in a referral to review the referral system and see what we can do.
That didn't, that didn't get us very far.
Well, let me see if there's any member of the public or anyone in chambers that would like to make a comment on this. I see Kevin Dayton coming forward.
Yes, Kevin Dayton, and in this case, I can speak for both the Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce and the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce, and the Salinas City Center Improvement Association, too. Uh, you know, you happened, your regional housing needs assessment, assessment, allocation, uh, achievement isn't all that great. I would say it's disappointing, I wouldn't call it dismal, but, uh, you managed to get away with that, with those numbers compared to some of the cities, because I think some of the housing advocates tend to focus on the cities and their struggles, and people don't even realize that the county has their own, you know, incorporated areas with their own goals. And I have to say, I, I'm often disappointed, I, I look at the Planning Commission, uh, agendas, and, you know, it always seems to be disproportionately, and maybe this is just in my head, but it seems to me that it's disproportionately luxury homes, you know, around Carmel Valley and Carmel. And, uh, I've also, uh, a few years ago, did an analysis of, uh, nine local governments in the Monterey Bay area and the policies that they have to encourage housing, and Monterey County actually came out ninth out of nine. Uh, there are things I think you could do to, to, uh, uh, change some of your policies to perhaps try to encourage the regional housing needs allocation numbers. I know it's very difficult, there are many things to do, but I, I think you could actually do more. Some cities talk about this quite a bit, and I know you have a lot on your plate, but this is something maybe you want to look at for the next, uh, housing element. And I know you have a lot on your plate, but this is something maybe you want to look at for the next housing element. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comment. Seeing no one else approaching the day, the podium. I am looking to see whether or not there's anyone else online with their hands raised. Okay. Sorry that I'm not seeing that. Eloise Shim. Thank you. Eloise Shim.
Okay, Ms. Eloise Shim. So I want to make a comment about this planning implementation. As someone whose unemployment insurance is run, has ran out and. After the pandemic, now we're looking at the phenomena of the great resignation, meaning that a lot of people have just resigned from their jobs. So the job market to me looks like. Anywhere from $20 an hour for a job up through $150,000 annually. And that's a big labor market disparity. And in San Francisco, you have to be making $62 per hour to afford a two bedroom apartment or house or whatever, two bedrooms. And I don't think that Monterey and San Francisco is that different in a parallel ratio. So I think that the planning implementation should find some realistic solutions. To closing the gap between what the labor market will bear and the housing market. Because it, it just doesn't make any sense. How are you going to have people be able to afford housing? When the labor, the, what the labor market will bear, they, they won't be able to buy a $700,000 house, which is the affordable housing.
Thank you so much for your comment, Ms. Shim. It's very well received. Is there anyone else that we see?
There are no more hands raised.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll bring it back to the board and I.
Staff recommendation?
Yes. Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion from Lopez, a second from Phillips.
For the chair, can I just, another question that came up, and thank you for your comment, Kevin, about arena numbers and just sort of the focus that you see other cities putting on that. I know we added housing to the four H, three H, multiple H committee at the beginning of last year. And I'm just curious, is this, is what kinds of conversations are, are happening in the four H committee around housing? And assessing our arena numbers and looking at those policies to determine how we can more aggressively move forward to meet those arena requirements. We have looming over our head in the next two years.
So specifically to the arena numbers, we haven't had that knowing that the new numbers were coming and not knowing what our baseline was. Today was a great opportunity to get that info, that presentation, this presentation did bypass that committee. But it is an opportunity for us to revisit those figures. I think the bigger challenge is going to be the question of location, right? It's the same question as we look at, I tie it back to all the committees I said on A E E and wanting to reduce trips and reduce miles travel for people to get to work. You know, it's, it's about that distribution where we've seen agriculture, a lot of the units that we're looking at in the unincorporated are paid for by agricultural employers. And so I think looking at some of the, there's more proposals coming down the, the pipe on that and several of them. And I know that those will be coming before committee before too long and that will help. But is the answer to continue to build away from where people are working for a second major sector in the community? I think that's the, going to be a bigger question as we continue to see more and more housing get built in the Salinas Valley. Obviously, we have large projects coming before LAFCO as well on Solidad and Gonzalez's plate is that they're pushing forward. And as those come forward, those questions about sharing credit and, you know, that was going to unincorporate, isn't any longer as those fears get adopted in. But understanding that balance and mix is critical for us. And so I think we're considering all those pieces. But in terms of having a direct conversation, I know that my ask of staff has been to get the numbers and now we have the numbers. So I'm excited to see what we can do. I actually leaned over and mentioned to John with some of the projects we've seen coming in his district alone. We might be able to wipe some of these, you know, numbers out completely and half jokingly, but half seriously. Where the need throughout this community is real and folks are stepping up to get it done. And I know that it's, they're tough conversations, right? In terms of getting them to where they need to be, but they are happening at this point so far than not in committee.
We could ask the committee to take on sort of tracking those arena numbers and not just waiting for the projects to show up, but really proactively looking at some of these policies that we need to update. To ensure that projects do get to us, identically, proactively identifying the locations. I think that that was something that I had envisioned when I had suggested originally that we include housing as a standalone committee. Because it is difficult conversations and there's a lot to it. It doesn't, it doesn't only. It requires, I think, that the active management of where are we at? What are we doing? What's in the pipeline? Where are we planning to, you know, like really aggressively doing the work to, to monitor that? So I would just ask that our housing committee could really kind of focus in on all of the different aspects that we need to be prioritizing to push that forward.
Happy to continue to request that those numbers come back through committee. I think the, the challenge for us will continue to be the, the use of the royal we. It's who's actually building, right? Who's actually doing the work? And right now it is pretty one sided.
It is. I mean, that's another whole element, you know, an issue around what it is that we face. What kind of projects are we approving? You know, are we approving projects that are going to get people closer to work where they can afford to live? Or we're approving projects that, you know, complement sprawl and, and, you know, where we have no water to build it anyway. So it's, it's a massive issue that really, I, I feel like it's got to be our top issue as far as how we're going to be able to address it. Supervisor Leho, your hand is up?
Yes, I, I wanted to weigh in only on this, on, on the, what was just, just said about the committee and, and arena numbers. Because you could have all the re, arena numbers and, and they could be given to the county, but that doesn't really get us anywhere. What really does get us anywhere is when projects do move forward and because we are not the developers. We don't, we don't go and acquire property and put in an application and, and, and build the housing ourselves as a county. So we're not in a position to do that. That's a way, that just is not the way it works. The way it works is, is you facilitate when developers or employers want to bring housing, that we can make it as easy as possible. And, and so that we can meet our arena goals. And as Chris pointed, Supervisor Lopez pointed out, those numbers are being revamped. And, and Ambag is the entity that issues those per the new state formula. And we have done some of that already and it's, and we, we, we've approved it through this committee. For example, on, on employer sponsored housing, we, Supervisor Lopez and I through the four H committee. Forwarded to formalize that program to expedite the permitting so that it's given priority and it's not, doesn't get backlog in for unneeded unnecessarily for months. Sitting somewhere waiting to get processed though that last project got done in a matter of just a few months and it got built in a matter of a few months. And as Supervisor Lopez pointed out, more of those are coming. Employers see the opportunity to completely pay a hundred percent. For the construction costs to meet the needs of their workers. And that's a great thing that we, we are seeing more employers wanting to do that. They are stepping up, they are putting up the money. And what we could do as a county is to make that process quicker and easier for them. And because we formalized that permitting program, I think that's why we have some other projects coming up, coming through the pipeline. And they will be perhaps before us very soon. The, the other part, and if we want to talk about trying to meet significant housing needs, it's going to be those bigger conversations, the tougher conversations. About those large proposals to build housing in places like Gonzalez and Solidad. Those are the, the real significant numbers. We get all, we get many of these small projects that are a few dozen here or there. But if we want to really try to meet our needs when those moments come, that is how, that is going to be when we as a board could achieve those goals. And, and so when those projects come through, whether it's LAFCO and some of us are voting members. And then when it comes to the board of supervisors, that's where we could provide direction to help facilitate and prioritize. So that those projects are not backlogged unnecessarily when we could help move them forward more quickly so that we can meet our housing needs. It's at that, those points is where we get opposition. Sometimes you get the same old circular arguments that it's not the right place. It's, it's, we don't have the water. Those are all the typical arguments we hear when those significant proposals come forward. But that's the moment where, where it's going to take some leadership and courage to do what is right, to meet the needs of our, of our families and our, and our workforce within our county. Thank you, manager.
Thank you. I think those are the only comments that we have, so I'm going to bring it back to this board. And I think now our recommended action is that we accept the 2021 annual progress report and authorize it to be submitted to the state. Could we have a motion to do that?
I think you've got a motion. Pardon? You already have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's, so that was Phillips and Lopez, Lopez and Phillips.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So finally, let's bring it to a roll call vote. Supervisor Leho?
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips?
Hi.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Rudeaskew?
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Adams. Hi. Thank you very much. With that, we will close item 14 and open item 15, which is to consider approving the 2022 Downtown Government Center Memorandum of Understanding with the City of Salinas. And for this, we are seeing Lori, excuse me, Ms. Lyrable coming forward to who will join Ms. Beretti.
So the supervisors. I am Melanie Beretti and I will be joined by Lindsay Lyrable, who's our chief of facilities. And we will be available today and presenting the item before you. So bear with me while I do my share screen again. Okay. All right. Thank you. So again, Melanie Beretti with the Housing Community Development Department, joined by Lindsay Lyrable, our chief of facilities. Also, joined by Zoom, we should have Lisa Britton, Assistant Director with the Community Development Department of the City of Salinas. Unfortunately, she may not be available because the City of Salinas does have their council meeting right now, but the city did want to extend their support for this item and thanks for hearing it. So since 2012, the county and city have worked together as laid out via the memorandum of understandings for the planning and development of a downtown government center. In 2015, this downtown MOU was updated to acknowledge the mutual acceptance of the 2015 downtown vibrancy plan prepared by the City of Salinas. To strategically guide planning of the downtown government center. In this current 2022 update of the downtown MOU, we build upon the prior MOU and its successes. And this updated MOU specifically identifies three core areas for coordination and planning. Those include parking, land use and mobility and safety. It has a term of five years. There's a requirement that staff do annually report to the respective hearing bodies, the board as well as the city council. There's a performance of schedule. It does allow for written amendments. And this updated version also addresses right of entry as necessary for joint projects. So the city and county agreed to work collaboratively for the first core area on a long-term parking solution for the downtown government center. And this includes undertaking planning activities to determine the feasibility of a joint use parking facility. So the city is a lead party for the parking facility feasibility and planning. It's been identified in the MOU that each, the city and county will contribute 50% of the costs for shared planning activities. In June of last year, the board did authorize the utilization of $500,000 from the capital improvement program funding toward this effort. Staff has reserved approximately 200,000 to fund our staff time as well as a county parking needs assessment out of those funds. And then the other approximately 300,000 go toward that 50 50 share of the joint planning activities. So exhibit A to the MOU lays out the key planning activities in relation to the parking structure. And we'll discuss the near term activities in a few slides. We did perform some outreach with regards to the downtown MOU prior to, prior to bringing it before you today. So in February, the city distributed the draft MOU to downtown stakeholders as well as posting it on their website. We got one letter of support which was received from the Salinas City Center Improvement Association. That letter is attached to your board report. On March 9th, the county mailed a notice to property owners within 300 feet of the Alice Al campus. Providing a link to the draft MOU posted on the county's webpage and informing those individuals of the board and the council's planned consideration of the MOU today. We did not receive any public input from that mailing. The city and county joint ad hoc committees also met jointly on March 7th and considered the draft MOU. During that meeting, the joint ad hoc committees agreed to convene together not less than quarterly. With the intention of keeping progress moving and full transparent, for full transparency. With planned check-ins as well as to guide staff when or if topics are ripe for presentation to the board and the council. And then of course, the individual ad hoc committee meeting committees can meet as needed in between. The second of the three core areas that we coordinate on is land use. So in land use, we will be coordinating on facilities, master planning efforts for the downtown government centers. We'll be exploring, looking at mixed use and or affordable housing opportunities in the downtown area for county and city owned properties. Evaluating the potential reuse, preservation or replacement of county or city owned historic buildings. That includes the old jail for the county, as well as looking and identifying opportunities for open space expansion or development in the downtown area. We'll also be collaborating on efforts to provide for attractive, green, safe and convenient pedestrian linkages between government facilities and main street. And the city is well underway implementing a number of projects that were identified in their downtown vibrancy plan towards this, towards this end. So for next steps, the parking facility in exhibit A lays out a number of activities that will be moving forward. For the spring and summer of this year, of which it includes, but is not exclusively, it will include city and county joint, a community outreach and engagement. Will include developing a preliminary for the city to develop a preliminary funding strategy for the county's consideration. Developing preliminary site control agreement as well as identifying a project description that could be, that would be utilized to commence SEQA. I do want to emphasize that there will be opportunities, we will be bringing information back to this board and to the council. Prior to moving from one substantive stage to the next to check in and make sure that, that, that the information is available, that we're getting questions asked and answered. And that we get continued direction from the board with regards to continuing to move forward, yes or no on the project. And with that, it's recommended that the board approve the 2022 updated downtown government some center MOU and provide direction to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I will ask to see if there's comment from staff or from the board on this. Comment? Yes, madam. Go ahead.
I, I just reflect back about 15, 20 years ago. And we, we were looking about building a new court complex here. And so I had developers that were, it came into town to thought, maybe we could pull it off. And they wanted to build a new courthouse and turn that building, which is now the courthouse into bring probation and election and everything in there. But the first thing they, they said, they said, well, you need a parking structure before you do anything, you need a parking structure. And then the other idea that they had, they said, and if you're going to do administration building, go in conjunction. I had the mayor of Salinas at the time was here too, go in conjunction with the city of Salinas. And so one of you build it, the other, and then you lease half of it to the other one. But I mean, they were kind of looking at what, what maybe we should have done 15, 20 years ago. But the first thing they said is a parking structure and they were talking about having a walkover. So no one else gets hit coming across the parking lot. They were looking about the one over there. So anyway, just a little history.
Thank you for that walk down memory lane. Let's see, Supervisor Rudeaskew?
So Supervisor Leho, when I had the opportunity to work on this ad hoc committee, thank you for putting us to, designating us for that last year. But it did take us more time than I think we originally anticipated to update and review this MOU. However, I really am so deeply proud of the efforts, the collaborative efforts that the city and the county have made, have come together to, to move this forward. Engage in this conversation. I just want to thank, thank staff. And I'm really thrilled that the City of Salinas is fully supportive of this particular MOU and the process that we've taken. I'm just going to thank thank staff, and I'm really thrilled that the City of Salinas is fully supportive of this particular MOU and the process that we've taken moving forward. I spent the last weekend in at the Civic Well policymakers conference where there were really rich discussions about the importance of infill development and prioritizing downtown transit centered development, which is what this MOU allows us to move forward with to centralized parking in a multi level structure so that we can open up prime development parcels in downtown Salinas. You know, allowing this structure, it's a it's about it's a parking structure that we're talking about engaging in. But really what it what it represents is best practices in creating infill housing. It represents support for mass transit solutions. It represents a vibrant economic centers and climate change action that that we're partnering with our our city neighbor to make happen. And I think that it's really easy to argue and maybe has been argued in the past that the responsibility to support this work within a city jurisdiction isn't the responsibility of the county. But but the reality is, is that we are all in this together. The choices that we make and how we support our city in this type of infill development helps us achieve the housing that we just talked about that we really desperately need. It helps us support the mass transit, helps us all collectively move our shared values forward. And so I just want to thank this board for allowing this conversation to move forward so that we can put these like really valuable properties to their highest possible use. But it comes down to talking about a parking garage, which is isn't exciting, but all the things that it represents are really, really exciting. So I'm really proud of the the work that's that's gone on to get us around today.
Thank you Supervisor Ruaskew. Supervisor, the sound is good. Okay Supervisor Leho.
Yeah, I wanted to just add in and thank the city for, I think we the county, the city have built a closer relationship. But I think the city has to be commended too for having staff and a city manager, a mayor and a council. It's also a little bit more visionary, and I think the timing couldn't be better with Insalinas to really look at how we could uplift and do some model housing and commercial properties in Old Town that I think people have wanted to see for a long time. And if anybody goes on a weekend to Main Street on Thursday, Friday through Sunday, you will see that there's a lot happening there, a lot of small businesses have opened up recently. A lot more people wanting to hang out within their own community rather than than going elsewhere to do that. I think that's an exciting moment in Salinas's history, and there's an opportunity to get more done. I I love seeing outside of Old Town that the city is focusing on places like East Salinas, it's East Salinas with the Alasal Vibrancy Plan, and there is now added conversations between the city and county how we could perhaps partner on some other projects in other parts of the of the city. I think this is this this agreement or this updated MOU creates the right framework to have a process to consider that the parking structure, we're not there yet. We all know, and I just wanted us to be practical here that with the financing starts to come back to this board to consider. And that 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 will come to us in a few months. But that's the most challenging part. Construction is very expensive. And 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 that's the how to finance it, knowing that we have a difficult budget coming in the next three years is going to be the challenge that we will have to decide when that moment comes for us. The county has certain a certain amount of needs, but I think this is a project really trying to help get other projects in the vicinity off the ground with its parking needs and certainly the housing, mixed housing and commercial. There's some good prospects to make that happen. But I think we're we're this this disagreement is about allowing this, putting our previous votes to create the 85 parking units on our county property. We put that on hold to allow this conversation to take place, but the hard decisions are yet to come is what I'm basically saying here. So we know how important this is, but I I know that the challenge will be how do we make the funding happen happen? And I am glad that Bruce Taylor has stepped up to the table and has been a key player to help make some of the these projects that we're talking about happen within Old Town. But it's certainly going to continue to be a key piece, whether the financing could could get off the ground for this particular parking structure we've been talking about over the last couple of years. But I I certainly want to make move that we approve and support this MOU moving forward today, but there will be more decisions to be made, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much Supervisor Leho, and I agree with you. I think the the more difficult discussions are the ones that are going to be upcoming, but I believe that we have really got a really great relationship with the City of Salinas at this time. And I think that those very difficult decisions are going to be easier because of the of the relationships that that are in existence. I can remember a time when, take a bit memory lane, when the relationships were so strained that as the Director of United Way, I was called in to see if I could broker peace between the Chair of the Board and the Mayor of Salinas. So I mean, we're talking pretty, pretty difficult times, and thank goodness the situation is quite different now. But let me take it out to the public for comment before we bring it back for a vote from the board. And I see we have Kevin Dayton, who is our biggest biggest customer today.
Yes, thank you, Kevin Dayton, representing Salinas City Center Improvement Association. And thank you for all the positive comments about downtown Salinas. I've been in this particular position for four and a half years, and initially, when I started, the negativity and and was terrible. And that downtown vibrancy plan that you had approved in 2015 along with the city was really struggling. And now I have to say, one of the proudest things I've had in my entire career working in in government affairs is when my daughter said to me last fall, Dad, downtown Salinas is so changing for years. Thanks for being involved with that. And I said, well, many people played a role. I just happened to be coasting along with the changes. But definitely the improved relationship between the city and the county is great. Supervisor Leo, oh, yes, we talk about the financing for that parking garage all the time. That's your big obstacle there. I think environmental review will be fine, but how to pay for it? And I think a lot about that, and I think about integrating various public agencies and maybe some private developers to make this happen. You know, the whole idea of that garage is get all of the parking concentrated in one place and then take all of that surface parking lots and turn it into where people live. That's how you transform downtowns, and that's what the downtown vibrancy plan is about. So thank you for your support of this as you as you move forward on it.
Thank you, Kevin. I do not see any other hands raised from the public. So with that, I'll bring it back to our board for a vote to accept and approve.
Move approval.
I made a motion earlier to move to approve.
All yours, Louise. We'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote? Supervisor Leho?
Hi.
Supervisor Phillips?
Hi.
Supervisor Lopez?
Hi.
Supervisor Ruaskew?
Hi.
And Chair Supervisor Adams. Hi. Thank you so much. The motion passes.
Madam Chair, we could take a quick break. We have to change tapes and things like that.
Thank you very much. We will reconvene at 4:45, five minutes exactly. Thank you.